Okay, good evening, everyone. Calling to order the August nineteen twenty twenty-five meeting of the South Borough Select Board. And before we get to our first scheduled agenda item, which is police departments, student officer appointments, first item on the agenda is public comment. And this is an opportunity for people who want to speak to an item which is not on the agenda and try to limit public comment to three minutes, not intended as a back and forth, but just as an opportunity for people to offer a comment on something that's not on the agenda. Is there anyone here or in the online audience that wants to offer a public comment? All right, so seeing none. Chief, I'm gonna hand it over to you.
Okay. Thank you for having us here tonight. We're here requesting the board's appointment of Mr. Christopher Biondi and Mr. Joseph DeLuca to the position of student officer with the South Borough Police Department. Both have been through an extensive hiring process and both have successfully passed their physical, psychological, and background investigation. They have also tested and been accepted into the thirty-sixth ROC Boylston Police Academy. Mr. Biondi is a resident of Millbury, Mass. He has a bachelor's degree in forensic science and chemistry from the University of New Haven. He has a master's degree in toxicology from the University of Baltimore. He also, prior to accepting this position with our department, he was employed as a scientist with ABV out of Worcester, Mass. Mr. DeLuca is a resident of Holliston, Mass. He recently earned his bachelor's degree in criminal justice from Roger Williams University, where he also had an internship with the Newton Police Department. He was a member of the university's track team, track and field team, for four years, and he will be joining his father, Sergeant James DeLuca, who has been employed by our department for the past twenty-two years. We are excited to have both Mr. Biondi and Mr. DeLuca as a part of our team, and with your expected appointment tonight, we look forward to having them begin in their new position as student officers with an effective date of Monday, August twenty-fifth, which would be their first day of the academy. That's this coming Monday. These additions to our department roster will bring our sworn number of officers to twenty-three, with two more additional positions to fill in April of next year. And with that, does the board have any questions for myself, Mr. Biondi, or Mr. DeLuca?
I don't have any questions. I think it's a proud moment for each of you and, you know, look forward to both of you joining the South Borough Police Department.
Yes, welcome. It's a great department, and we're happy to have you.
Welcome to both of you. Just to clarify, Mr. Biondi? Mr. DeLuca? Okay, so I'm looking at the faces here to make sure I can match it up, and it looked like I was doing the right thing here. So, welcome to both of you. And what a great background you've got education-wise, Mr. Biondi. Chemistry. Very good.
I was also flattered by that, so look forward to having you here. Go with you. Thank you.
All right, Al?
No questions.
All right, then I move that the board appoint Christopher Biondi and Joseph DeLuca as student officers.
Second?
Well, they have to do a roll call votes. So, Dennington, aye?
Landry, aye.
Cook, aye.
Ling, aye.
Hamilton, aye.
Okay. Congratulations.
Very much.
Very much.
Now with that, I will ask our assistant town clerk, Stephanie Sessino, to come up and have the swearing-in ceremony. We'll start with Christopher Biondi.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties incumbent upon you as a student police officer for the South Borough Police Department to the best of your ability and understanding, in accordance with the rules and regulations of the Police Department, the Constitution, and the laws of the United States, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and the ordinances by laws and regulations of the Town of South Borough enacted under the authority of the Select Board, so help you God. Congratulations.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties incumbent upon you as a student police officer for the South Borough Police Department to the best of your ability and understanding, in accordance with the rules and regulations of the Police Department, the Constitution, and the laws of the United States, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and the ordinances by laws and regulations of the Town of South Borough enacted under the authority of the Select Board, so help you God.
Yes, ma'am, I do.
And that's all we have for tonight, so thank you very much. Thank you all for your votes, and we wish these new officers good luck in their academy as they start on Monday. So, thank you. Thank you.
the Class Two Auto License for six-thirty. So, I was thinking before, rather than start you and then have to, I was thinking I could just, maybe just start with some of the reports here, so, they're not listed here, but I've got a couple chairs' reports thing. One is a logistical thing. I know Mark and Vanessa reached out to you about scheduling for next week, so we have to make a decision about whether to extend the MSBA deadline, ask for a extension of the MSBA deadline, which is obviously a significant thing that there's gonna be interest in, and then I was away on, and the deadline to do so is August twenty-eighth, which is next Thursday, and I just did not wanna, wanted some time to think about this rather than deal with it the Tuesday right after I came back from my summer vacation. So, I think we've, it seems like everyone is available to meet next, the same time next Tuesday at six-thirty, but I appreciate that, you know, Tim also has a little bit of a scheduling conflict with, he's on the pre-K through eight school building committee, which, what's, when is their start time?
Seven PM.
Seven PM, okay. So, I mean, here's some things. I mean, we could, we can meet a little bit earlier, right? We could meet at six o'clock on Tuesday, if that helps you out a little bit, or we could try to meet on Monday or Tuesday. If we met on Monday, we need to post tomorrow. So, I just wanted to throw that out there. It seems like everyone is available next Tuesday, right? So, maybe the best thing to do is just, we try to meet at six, and then if then, your meeting is at seven?
I'm okay with that. I know that the one thing I'd say is we did seven because there's a back-to-school function. So, as long as we're okay with, you know, what we're talking about and that back-to-school function near each other, six could work.
So, the back-to-school function is at four, four-thirty?
Yeah, I think it ends at six, so we'd be starting right as it ends, so anybody that would wanna listen in would be calling in right as that school function would end. So, we're just up against it from that. That's why we pushed our meeting to seven.
And this is a single agenda, a single item agenda?
I think we're gonna have, once you start to have a meeting, there's things attracted there might be.
But we're gonna start with this?
Yeah.
Okay. I can do six. Can you do six?
Okay, Al, do you have a view?
I believe I can do six.
All right, so should we do six? All right. Okay, another thing which-
In person?
In person.
Okay.
Another thing, as you, as people know, I'm on the Tricentennial Committee, and one thing I'm pleased to report, I sat on the train into town today with Michelle Hokason, who's from the Historical Commission, and she has begun doing the series of interviews, kind of oral hit, oral history interviews of South Borough residents, you know, just doing informal videotape discussions, and graciously, Terry Underwood of South Borough Access Media is volunteering a lot of her time to help and using the, offering the SAM Studio to do these interviews. She's already conducted three of the interviews, including Bia Jenga. So, I think that's great, and just wanted to make people aware of that and spread the word, so if you know, it doesn't necessarily have to be people who are, you know, senior citizens, but anyone who's lived in the town for a long time that wants to talk about their remembrances of South Borough, and you think ahead to the next celebration, you know, fifty years from now, you think, oh, it would be nice if there was some little video of this person talking. So, if you know anyone in that category, please reach out to me or Michelle, 'cause this will be, the idea is to just do this periodically for the next year or so and collect a little library of interviews.
Can I append to what you just said?
Sure.
Since it's related. So, you know, we've got a separate five-one-C-three that has been formed to raise money for the Tricentennial, and that's off, we're, that, so I'm part of that, I'm treasurer, of course, and we are off to the races on that, so stay tuned for what's going on there too. But we've gotten a very good start as far as being well-received, as far as what we've been asking for.
Okay, and there was also, I'm sure people saw an email from Mary Ann Anderson inviting someone from this, the Select Board to attend a tenth anniversary event for the Trailblazers Group of the Senior Citizens on September third at four-thirty. I know I can't make it, but it would be good if at least one of us was able to go.
I told her I couldn't either, so.
Okay.
That's too canteen.
Which day is that?
It's one, two, three, it's a Thursday.
Yeah.
I think I can do it.
Excuse me, it's a Wednesday.
It's a Wednesday.
Yeah, so first is a Monday.
September third.
So, I'll contact you.
All right. And another thing I wanted to put on your radar screen is that, you know, at our goal-setting meeting where we talked about a potential town meeting article to either do it directly or form a committee to start thinking about ways to streamline the number of boards and committees and departments we have and make the town government more efficient, Al and I met about that recently, and I think what we hope to have is a memo and a more concrete proposal for people at the meeting on September second. All right, so that's all I've got under chairs' report, and then Al, I think you've got two under members' reports?
I think I've got three, but I'll talk fast.
Okay, let's write three.
We made good progress on the agenda app. We now have a requirements document that I think is reasonably complete, and we're proceeding forward. At some point, the, this board will be asked to identify a place where the agendas can be available twenty-four-seven to the republic. Apparently, this is commonly done in a public safety building, although what would be required is that there would be some sort of video monitor with the posted agendas, so that's one thing. The wastewater committee has been making steady progress. Our focus at the moment is on trying to figure out how to pay for, which is a daunting task. We are going to be making a trip to Littleton. They're building a system that would be similar to what we would contemplate, and we're gonna have a long discussion about how they succeeded in paying for it. I think it's likely that we will have what, a gate review of some sort in the month of September where we'd make the presentation and talk to the board about, you know, what we found so far and where we are, and then make a decision about how to proceed. And then finally, the transfer station, two items. I attended a meeting with a vendor on a, that Bill Konduf set up, who has technology for license plate reading similar to the one you find on the Pike. We could, in fact, transition to a access system where we no longer had to have stickers. It would simply be done by automated reading of the license plates. This is not terribly expensive, apparently, and it brings up some interesting opportunities. We could, for example, sell less than one-year subscriptions. We could sell, you know, single-day or single-trip types subscriptions, which might help deal with the next item I'm going to bring up with, and could be a potential revenue opportunity. There is a market out there for waste disposal, and if, and we have the tools and the equipment and the facility to do waste disposal, and if we can figure out how to charge for it and make a profit at it, then this could conceivably be a source of revenue for the town. Obviously requires a lot more study. And then finally, I've been receiving a number of reports on two sort of classes of violations that have been going on at the transfer station. One is access without a sticker, and the second one is commercial bumping, and this has been going on for as long as I've been involved with town government, and I think it's time that this board took a hard look at it and began, begins to think about enforcement. And in particular, I'm going to suggest that we place that on an agenda sometime in the next month so that we can deal with this. The folks that are using the facility without paying for it or using the facility in contravention of our rules are, for all intents and purposes, stealing from the rest of us, and it's not appropriate, and I think it's time that we took some steps to bring this practice to the hall. That's it, I'm done.
Al, are you keeping John Butler informed as far as the conversations about possibly electronic system?
Yes.
Because, you know, we've asked him to help us determine whether to renew the liberator contract in a couple years?
Yes, yes. I wrote a quick memo on it, and I believe I copied him on it.
Okay.
All right, Mark, do you have anything under town administrators' report?
Just two quick items to update the board on. The first one, the RFP for Health Insurance Consultant Services, we did receive bids in. Of the thirteen, I think, plan holders, seven responded, so that the non-price proposals have been sent out to the review committee, made up of Brian Ballantyne for South Borough, Heather Richards for the schools, and Jason Little, excuse me, from North Borough. So, we'll be going through those and then doing the price proposals, and then looking at next steps. Still hoping to bring a recommendation forward to the board for appointment in September, as we planned, so that is, that is on schedule. And some good news, I know it's a year later than we thought it was going to be, but the golf club irrigation system replacement project has been advertised in the central register, and the bids are going to be due on September seventeenth, so we'll have a sense as to where we're going with that. Management company really would like the installation to happen middle, end of October, testing in November before they shut the system, this course down for the season, and then they can begin to use it, you know, in earnest next March. So, that's-
Is that doable with your timing?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. So, where we've anticipated, the project itself, my understanding is that it should not take long for the actual installation of it. It's just this, rest of this has taken a lot longer than we thought, so.
Okay. So, now moving back to the scheduled deployments, we have a pub, a hearing on an application for a Class Two Auto Dealer License from Pratt's Automotive Group. Yeah, could you please read the hearing notice?
Sure. South Borough Select Board should hold a public hearing Tuesday, August nineteenth, twenty-twenty-five, six-thirty PM in the McCullough Hearing Room, Seventeen Common Street, South Borough, to consider an application from Pratt's Automotive Group for a Class Two Used Car Dealer's License to be located at three fifty-five Turnpike Road in South Borough. Public hearing may be viewed or listened to by the public through a link located at mass-south- dash southborough.civicplus.com/674/virtualmeetings. All interested parties are encouraged to view and/or participate.
Okay, so, I have been in contact with Mark. There's an issue with this application in that, that I've talked to Mark, and Mark's talked to town council about this, in that the, the use that the applicant is looking for a license for can't be done under our zoning without a special permit from the ZBA, and it's section one seventy-four dash E, section C two, which provides no more than one principal permitted use per lot can occur without special permit from the ZBA. So, I know, I don't know if there's someone from Pratt here, okay? Sir, so I understand your, if you wanna come and introduce yourself.
Tarsis Pedrosa?
Yeah, please sit down and just introduce yourself.
My name is Tarsis Pedrosa, owner of Pratt's Automotive.
Okay, so, I understand, you know, you've expressed some frustration about the fact that, you know, you submitted this application, you've been working with the town at some time, and then, you know.
Well, this has come to my knowledge yesterday, and I applied two months ago. I spoke to, what's her name? Melanie. She said that the property was already zoned for that. It had like a twenty-four car lot permit on it, so that I should have zero problem with it. So, I said, all right, cool. So, then we scheduled the meeting two months ago, and then yesterday, you guys, you know, gave me this bomb where I could've done all of that prior to this, you know? Plus, why would I go through special permitting if the property is already zoned for what I am, what I am asking for? Shouldn't the other business go for special permitting?
All right, you're asking a bunch of questions that all have to do with zoning, and really, what we're just focused on is the Class Two Auto License, and when, you know, I gotta say, the town hasn't always been consistent about the sequencing of, okay, you know, a license like this and overlay with zoning, but, I mean, the, better to know about an issue like this now.
Right.
Down the road. So, I can think of the most practical way of dealing with this is, we could vote to continue the hearing, maybe until, two weeks until September second, and then that gives you, as the applicant, some time to look into this and think about how you wanna approach the issue. And then we pick it up again two weeks from now. That's the best suggestion I have, but again, I understand your frustration, but unfortunately, this often happens, that, you know, we have-
I mean, the-
A bunch of things we deal with, and then, as people focus on it right before the meeting, you identify these issues like this.
Right. So, from what I am understanding of it, is because of the other dealership that is next to it, they, they are the ones that are complaining, complaining that, that, that the property isn't up, 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 up to code with, with whatever, you know, it was said. But if the property is already zoned for what it is being asked for-
All I can say is that this is the particular section you gotta look into, one seventy-four dash-
For the same business, for the same license.
No, I'm-
That's what I said.
Okay, I don't-
For the same use.
I can't really help you tonight with this, other than to say, to just continue this and just kinda buy some time.
Okay.
All right?
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Would it be possible for this board to grant the license, subject to his receiving a, a variance from the ZBA to bring him into full compliance with zoning bylaws?
I don't want to do that, though, because you read this letter, and we've gotta get to the bottom of this. Why did Mr. Medri get, it sounds like a much different answer, when he tried to put a second use on his property? Zoning section we're looking at, it sounds like it's pretty clear, but that's not what looks like happened to him, so I'd like to understand more about what happened here before we-
The property where I am asking, I am not asking for a special permit on that. That property is already for what I am asking for, so my part is-
There's a zoning code section that says you can't do two different things on the same property. That's, it's pretty clear.
Right, two things of the same nature.
No, it doesn't say that.
We've had a whole email exchange about this before the meeting, and there's nothing I can add to that, but, would you like to speak to this at all? Okay, one, do you? Okay.
Anthony Medri, three forty-nine Turnpike Road, that's one of the properties I own. When I came in front of the board back in two thousand and fourteen- When I came in front of the board back in two thousand and fourteen, I believe, to ask for a class two license, the board, my attorney, Paul Galvani, who did with the town of Southborough all the time, we were here prior to applying for it and the zoning board was very clear. First, you cannot hold two licenses out of one property. So I had to hand my liquor license, beer and wine license to the town of Southborough in order to obtain class two license for selling cars, which wasn't a problem, but at the time, they told me it's a safety issue. Zoning board allow only one use out of the property. I have no objection to what he trying to do at the other property. But the other property next to me, they already have three uses in there. How many use can they allow? The town can allow four tenant in one property, I think, is that possible?
You were in front of the ZBA or the select board, which, you're talking about, you had a hearing with the ZBA or with the select?
The ZBA before I get back to you guys, yes. And I had, I have to give up my, uh, beer and wine license and I came in front of you and it was no problem.
Okay, well.
That's, I just wanna clarify, I'm not against his license, just against the use of that property next door. I mean, they have a granite place that they dump a lot of, um, cement or whatever in my property, which I have pictured of that. They have tenant, I live in an apartment up there. They used, I mean, they have a fence place that operate in there and now they wanna license. Where they gonna park? How they gonna go in and out that property?
You gave up your beer and wine license?
I had to, the town required that. I had to, I handed back to the town of Southborough.
Property was on, um.
That's, uh, the one adjacent to, three forty-nine Turnpike Road.
And do you operate all those businesses or just this one?
So, so what he's saying is totally irrelevant to what we're doing here. His is a liquor license, trying to do some other thing. The property where I am at is already zoned for automotive.
Do you own the other businesses there?
No, I don't. So I, so I am coming in to do automotive on the part where it is authorized to do so. And it was already granted years ago. So I don't know where is the issue here, him saying that there is a lot of licenses where, where there's zero. I mean, one, because it, 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 it did had before. The other businesses, I don't know what, what, what's, you know, what, 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 um, what is going on with that?
I don't think he's saying that. I think he's saying that when I came and did this, that I had to give up one of my two businesses.
Because he was trying to do businesses that requires licenses. An office does not require a license. Class two license, beer license, it is totally different. I mean, like, total deal.
So we, we're just, we're not gonna be able to solve this through a whole, whole discussion tonight, but do you wanna add something?
So.
I mean, I know, ho- hold on.
So I, I, I just wanna be clear, the issue is not whether or not the property is zoned for the use that you want.
Mm-hmm.
The issue is that there are two separate types of uses on the property, which the zoning bylaw does not allow. So you have retail uses and then you're looking to add an automotive use,
Mm-hmm.
which are two separate permitted uses in the zoning bylaw. And the bylaw says you can only have one unless you go to the ZBA and get a special permit.
He's also saying something different though. He's saying because those other uses don't require license themselves, that he should be okay. He's the only one that requires a license. I don't think that's what this says.
It's not what it says and that's what I had, and, and quite honestly, that's kind of what I thought and what I hoped it meant. But I did check with our ZBA person, I did check with town council and, and they agreed with the interpretation. It's the permitted use, not a permit.
But isn't the answer, he needs to go and file with the ZBA for special permit?
Okay, so Mr. Barlini, you, you wanna?
One more, uh, this property is not on more of use anymore. It used to be body shop. They closed it, now they have a granite place, they have a rental place and they have a fence place. So I was not doing automotive, that's, that's all, that's all I have to say, thank you.
Yeah, John Bartelini Jr., Full Wire Circle, I'm the owner of three fifty-nine Turnpike Road. I also own the properties behind this also, three fifty-seven Turnpike Road. Um, I don't know who gave him his information, I don't know who Melanie is, uh, if I heard that correctly. Uh, but I, I own the property next door. Currently, right now, the fence place is infringing on my parking lot in a consistent, uh, not, two weeks ago, they had a truck there for the weekend. Um, a year ago, they had eight vehicles parked there constantly, I had to get out and complain. Finally, they moved them. They don't have enough room for twenty-four parking spaces, for twenty-four cars. They don't have enough room for three. So I don't know who's giving him this information, but it's wrong. All right, it, it's, he can go to the ZBA if he wants, but I will speak against it there also. You, you just don't have enough room. If he wants to put twenty-four cars there, they're already parking in my parking lot and I have to tell them not to do it. Um, so Jim Watson is the owner of the property. He leases the property to the fence people. All right, so he left, Mr., uh, uh, he, he's correct, that there was a Watson Auto Body there for years. They left and they have been gone a long, long time. He had, uh, several different people rent it through the course of the years, but now it's gone to a fence company. So the license, uh, the car license doesn't run with the property. That's not how this works. So, um, they're a little bit mixed up on how their zoning works. The zoning works is the number of people, uh, if you, you change your use, you're supposed to go in to the planning board, you're supposed to get a site plan and you're supposed to get a, a permit from the planning board. If you're gonna do something else, you have to go to the ZBA, uh, for multiple uses. So they've done none of this. I don't care what he does, I just know there's not enough room to put twenty-four cars down there. That's what got me running my receipt. If he wants to do two or three, I just still don't think there's enough room.
Well, everybody's more than welcome to go there, check it out, measure it and do whatever needs to be done.
I don't have to go there and measure it. I've been in this town for a hundred and twenty years, I know that property better than you do. And I know the zoning like the back of my hand.
Well.
So I got a little excited when Al Hamilton is saying they'll give you the permit. It, 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 it sets me to no end and I have to come out here and speak against a business. It really does. And I called Jim Watson last week, he didn't even know about you. I told him.
Okay, so I think usually these applications are very straightforward. As you can see, this one's really not very straightforward. So I think in this type of situation, one of the best things to do is just buy a little time, give yourself some time to think about how you wanna approach this problem, okay? So I, um, I move that we continue the hearing on this matter to September second. Um, and I was gonna suggest six thirty, uh, is there any reason to believe we have another thing that that's gonna bunch up against or six thirty? Okay.
Not if you schedule this.
So I'm, I move that we continue this hearing to September second at six thirty. Are you able to make it, sir?
Yes.
Okay.
Second in vote.
Okay, so, uh, roll call vote, Marguerite?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
And Al?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you folks.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Less contentious. Um, we have invited, uh, Sarah Castle, our longtime and excellent, uh, youth and family services director, to come. And I know she reached out to a bunch of us over the, you know, past couple of months, just invite us to meet with her about ideas that she has. I think it's beneficial, particularly for some of the smaller departments, to just periodically come in to talk to the select board. And I know that Tim is a new member to just, you know, give us a refresher on, uh, what your department is up to. Okay, thank, thank you very much.
So, um, thank you very much. Feel free to go through these later, I just wanted you to have some, uh, information to reflect on after our conversation. Um, and thank you for the opportunity to come here this evening and talk with you. It's a very busy time of year for our department, so, um, these are actually, uh, Janet Bartelain, who's our business administrator, is, yes, I'm sorry, am I too close? I can sit back. Janet Bartelain, our amazing business administrator, is currently stuffing, pre-stuffing five hundred bags, uh, you got five of them, um, for the school open houses. That's just for two of the open houses that are happening next week. So, um, I wanted you to have a sample of some of the information that we provide to families as they're bringing their kids in for anticipating the first day of school, so. Um, so I'm happy to share what we've been up to. Um, so I think as I've kind of previewed with, with all of you, um, and like, what I'd like to say to a lot of folks that I talk to is that our, our department, um, serves residents of all ages, um, at no cost. Um, our goal is to break down barriers to support, increase access, increase, um, skills and, uh, health and wellness initiatives. And we like to focus our work in three primary areas. Providing mental health support, prevention programs and need-based services. Um, so in your outreach bags, there's some flyers about, um, some of the mental health services that we offer. Uh, we really try to diversify how we deliver services. Um, we are a short-term support for people. Um, I'd like to share the story of when I first started in the department. We were operating much like a, uh, private practice and providing long-term support for, uh, a fewer residents. And, um, I really saw an opportunity to, to do more and thought long and hard about what was appropriate for, for our department. Um, and if you have any personal experience, um, looking for mental health support, it's, uh, can be extremely, uh, difficult and a stressful time. So we try really hard to provide pieces of support that we can and, um, help really identify long-term supports for people, um, through a variety of different resources and kind of help support them through, um, various struggles, um, that they might be facing. Um, I'm very proud of something that we call info sessions. So I've developed a number of presentations that are really sh- short, intended to be done in one hour, uh, two hours max, to provide the community some, uh, important information about different mental health topics. And all of these are really, um, based off of, um, conversations that we have had over and over and over again with various families about things that they're worried about. And so I've put them into a menu of topics and, um, we are presenting them individually by appointment in our office. We're doing them for groups. Um, we've been invited to go to some schools to give the information. So, um, we're really working hard on, um, trying to offer as much information as we can. And I see, Marguerite, that you're looking at, um, our suicide prevention flyer. Um, September is suicide prevention month. And so a number of topics that I offer through info sessions are, uh, important prevention topics. And so I'll be offering, um, one presentation every Tuesday at the library this upcoming month and have several other topics, uh, during various times of year that I'll be offering as well. Um, also in your flyers, information about our need-based services. Um, so information about fuel assistance, um, resource and referral support. Um, I think I've shared with several of you that, um, I have noted that there's a lot of opportunity in town for residents to receive assistance from various departments and various places. And so it's been a goal of mine to try to streamline access to support through one universal financial assistance application. And so we're kind of piloting this application this year. Recreation had their own, uh, camp scholarship application and RAP program. Um, and so now RAP does, does not have an application, they send everybody to us. And we work with families on applying and, um, you know, talking about their situation. And then that gives us the opportunity to point them in the direction of other things that might be helpful to them, other resources, which I think is a really nice way of increasing access. There are more opportunities, um, within the town to add to this application, which I would love to pursue, um, eventually. Um, but this is a good start. What else do I wanna tell you? Prevention programs, um, so I can't say enough about prevention. Um, this is an area that, uh, we have developed more in the last several years. Um, keeping in mind as a town department that our resources are limited, you know, we can't, um, we have to, we have to have the flexibility of responding to people's needs. And so we wanna equip people with knowledge and skills, um, to stay ahead and upstream of challenges. Um, so hopefully you've heard of Encompass, which is our substance use prevention coalition. Southborough, if you're not aware, this is very exciting, shares a drug-free communities grant, which is a highly competitive federal grant with the town of Northborough. And, um, our coalition was actually chosen in year one as a blue ribbon recipient and only eleven were chosen across the whole country. Um, so we're very proud of the work that we've been doing and this, um, grant has really, um, been very beneficial in taking strides in substance use prevention. Um, we're starting a new newsletter, um, you guys are probably familiar with our Mental Health Awareness Month programming that we do every year, so that falls into prevention programs. So there's a variety of things that we're doing and we're quite busy, um, especially right now. So I don't know if there's specific questions, um, about any of that.
I had two just quickly. Um, one is the, uh, the Interface Referral Service brochure, which is fabulous, which I've seen all over and I, and I think it's really helpful. Um, could, could you explain to me the, um, the funding for this? One, it's available to everybody in town, nobody has to come through you, they just call the number.
That's right.
Which is really good.
Yes, so you can call us and we'll kind of, um, talk you through what to expect, which can be helpful, because I think that can be a little, create a little uncertainty for people. But you don't have to, you can just call. As a subscribing community, Southborough residents of all ages can contact Interface and get support in finding providers. Um, and this is not just mental health, um, services, you can also look for psychiatry services and specific types of, of counseling, um, and treatment support. And the funding for Interface comes through our department, it's, it's in our budget currently.
Good, okay, and my.
Oops, sorry, I have timer going on.
I know, I'm, I'm just glad us, we all have that happen. The other question I had, or maybe you could explain, because it originally wasn't clear to me before you explained it. What's the difference between what a school counselor does and, uh, youth and family services counseling does?
It's a great question. Um, so a school counselor is very much focused on school success. And while a student is at school, is supporting them, um, if they're, they have mental health concerns, will help them, um, overcome any barriers they have to accessing curriculum and being successful academically in school. There are some times where, um, school counselors will be involved with a student and we will also be involved. Our services are more wraparound, um, we have the ability to, um, look at how that student exists in other areas, in their family, how they are at home socially, which isn't always a big piece of, um, the kind of support they receive at school. The short answer, you're welcome.
The opioid settlement funds. Um, we haven't used them yet at this point, correct?
Right.
So is there a plan to start thinking about how they could be deployed?
I know that there have been many ideas that have been shared. The last I knew about it was that, um, and I had reached out to, um, the health department and the board of health about forming a committee of sorts, um, not to be confused with all of the committees that we have in town already, but rather, um, a meeting of the. the committees that we have in town already, but rather a meeting of the minds of departments that are doing this work, police, schools, our department, the Health Department, to really brainstorm ideas. I do think there is some benefit to us having not spent some of the funds. The federal fund that I mentioned, the Drug-Free Communities Fund, which has been hugely instrumental in our substance use prevention work, has been under scrutiny. And it's possible that we might lose some funding. It's not clear as of right now. We're safe for right now. Things are status quo. But like many things, I think it's something that we need to be thinking about. We have a coordinator for the coalition who is a full-time employee doing this work day in and day out, and it would be an absolute shame to lose her. So the opioid settlement funds would be a perfect Plan B should we need them. But I think if that's not something we need to worry about, there are lots of other ideas on how we could use that. But I really do think it would be helpful to have a meeting of the minds because I think it's the kind of complex challenge that not one department will have all the answers to.
So who's part of the Encompass group? Us, Northborough, and who else?
It's just Southborough and Northborough.
Okay.
And we have, we're required for the Drug-Free Communities Grant to have sector representation from 12 different sectors of the community. So youth-serving organizations, treatment facilities, the schools, law enforcement, for example, there's 12 different sectors that are represented across both communities that are involved. And then we have what we call our general coalition membership, which consists of parents and, you know, citizens who are interested in the work and supporting the work. And that, you know, we have around 40 to 50 people who are part of the general membership.
And Northborough probably has the same opioid one. They've got more, but they've got probably the pot of money set aside too, right?
Right.
Okay. And who legally is supposed to decide how that money gets? What does state law say? Is it Board of Health that decides how the money actually gets used? They've got to approve it?
I think they, I don't, I haven't seen anything and that says that they have the illegal authority. I know they have the sort of jurisdiction over the funds right now. What I have seen is that the recommendation, there's a strong recommendation to form a committee in each community to make a decision about how those funds are utilized.
Because it's not a small amount of money.
Right.
It's a couple hundred thousand bucks and still coming in. Okay. I just want to, I hadn't heard.
Is there a deadline to spend that money?
I don't know the answer. No, that's okay. I don't know the answer to that.
But I just don't want to forget about it because, you know, we've had it for a while at this point and it's just sitting in the bank.
Yeah.
Tim, do you have any questions?
No. I mean, Sarah and I had a chance to catch up recently and I really like what her and the department are working on, so looking forward to supporting it from what I can.
Thank you, Tim.
Al? Do you have any questions for Sarah? I think you're on mute. On mute.
Al, you're on mute.
I think we have a larger issue in terms of how we organize human services going forward. And I think that's a somewhat separate discussion from what we're talking about today.
Okay.
It is. And we spent some time last year trying to work on that and got met with quite a firestorm from the senior group. So we were trying to do the right thing, so we should bring it up again. But I just want to say to conclude, I've worked with Sarah for a long, long, long time as part of the Friends Group that supports this department. And there's just, no one liked her, the work she does, what she has to live, what she has to see every single day. We just don't understand what is going through that office because we can't. It's all private, as it should be. But she carries a big burden, as do everybody else in that department, so.
Well, it's an honor for all of us that work there. We really believe that. It's a privilege to work in a town that values these services enough and that is committed to supporting its residents. And yes, we encounter some really difficult scenarios and it feels like a privilege to be able to, you know, that people trust us to help them through that. So we appreciate it.
You are appreciated.
All right. And then also on our agenda is the appointment of two interns. Now, I don't know, is this something where we, do we actually need a vote from us to, for these appointments? Or I think in the past, we've just been informed about that.
We do pay them.
Okay.
Well, the Friends is paying one of them.
Friends is paying one of them, but, you know, but they, you know, the belt and suspenders, you should appoint both, even though the funding source for one of them is coming from generosity of the Friends.
All right. I want to make sure I have the names correctly here. Rebecca Milligan and Delaney Couture. Okay. I move that we appoint Delaney Couture and Rebecca Milligan as interns in the Youth and Family Services Department.
Second.
Okay. Roll call vote. Dennington, aye.
Landry, aye.
Cook, aye.
Flynn, aye.
Hamilton, aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
You have any questions for us or?
No, no. I guess I will just add that thank you for the opportunity to come tonight to talk with you and for the conversations that I've had with each of you. I did mention in my conversations, ideas, opportunities for growth, one being that we'd really like to explore the idea of changing the name of our department. So I will likely come back to you to figure out how we navigate that. Hopefully it's a simple solution. But we'd really like to, as a first step, you know, label ourselves as a department that's serving all residents. I think Family, Youth and Family is kind of a narrow scope and we're often misunderstood about what it is we actually do. And so, to be continued.
Understood.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And thank you for the bag of materials. Okay. So next up is the consent agenda. Does anyone have holds to the consent agenda?
I'd like to hold C.
Okay.
The minutes were perfect, I thought.
You know, I'm going to hold B just because I have a question about it.
Oh, yeah. Hold B because we've got to fix the September office hours.
Okay. So any, any issues with A, D, E, F, and G?
Ho G.
Okay. Okay. So I move that the board approve consent agenda items A, D, E, and F.
Second.
All right. Roll call vote. Marguerite?
Landry, aye.
Cook, aye.
Flynn, aye.
Al?
Hamilton's aye.
Okay. So on B. Oh, I, if I didn't vote, I vote yes.
I didn't think you voted.
I vote yes. Okay. Sorry. First question I had on the meeting agenda, I mean, the meeting days, they all look good. I didn't, we've avoided Tuesday, November 4th because of Election Day, but I don't think, this is really an election year. I don't think there's any, we have to...
No. We normally, we normally do avoid it, but we can, we can put it back because I don't think there's anything to avoid. So we can move that to November 4th.
All right. So that's the only change that I have.
Okay.
So can we talk about the office hours for September? So September 9th. I'm happy to switch, but I can't do the 9th.
I have lost track of...
Is Vanessa here? Vanessa, can you look and see what the schedule is? I forget who. It may be with Marguerite.
It's on the website.
What are you, November 9?
Yeah. I think you may already be there with me.
I have.
It's on the town website.
November 9 is a Sunday.
No, excuse me, September 9th. September 9th, sorry if I said November. It's, okay. So who's doing October?
What day is that? 14th.
So who and Al? So can either Andrew or Al switch with me for September and I can do October?
Okay. I think you're looking for September.
No, I need somebody to do September 9th and I can do October.
I can do that.
And then I'll do October?
Yeah.
Okay. Will you get that switched on the website?
Yes. Okay. Anything else to discuss on the calendar?
Yes.
All right. And then, so Al, you held consent agenda item C?
Yeah. Item C, which is the appointment of the business analyst, which is essentially our payroll and benefits administrator. I can't support this. I spent some time with Brian going over how we currently process our payroll. And after I did that, I reckon back to essentially the same conversation I had 15 years ago. 15 years ago, the way we processed payroll in particular was out of date and I don't think we've made material improvements on it since. We're poorly integrated with the schools. There is still paper involved in the, in the system. And I just, I can't continue to, you know, as I've been doing a few other things, I've been seeing, you know, these antiquated processes, business processes that we have. And it's just unacceptable to me. I can't look a taxpayer in the eye and say that we're trying to efficiently use your money when we're, when we're doing this. I'm actually kind of disappointed. You know, we have skilled and well-paid professionals and we are not making, we are not moving town halls administrative processes into the second quarter of 21st century. We're still stuck in the 80s and 90s. I would be perfectly happy if you want to hire a temp until we can improve this processing. But to bring on a full-time employee and to continue what we've been doing is unacceptable to me and it should be unacceptable to every taxpayer in the town of Southborough. It's just not right. And we need, we need to fix this process. It was unacceptable 15 years ago. It's unacceptable today. And so there, I'll get off the soapbox, but we, I can't support adding a full-time person with the expectation that if we were actually to be efficient, we would probably be asked laying that person off or at least cutting their hours in half. So I'm going to be a no on this one. I don't know how the other members of the board feel.
Can I make the counterargument, Andrew?
Sure.
So I've been dealing with payroll, payroll services for 40 years. I believe adamantly that we need a full-time in-house payroll person. I mean, the alternative to basically try to hire someone from outside, you know, the big ones, this is what happens. You still need people inside because they don't deal with problems very well. The people that staff these firms are data input people for the most part, nothing wrong with that, but they don't understand taxes and how things work and therefore they don't, they can't solve problems. We've got a complex payroll in this town between all the contracts you've got to deal with, the unions, et cetera. However, I do agree with Al on this. I mean, I've looked at this before too. There is, there's something we really need to start doing, which is look at a consolidation of services between the town and the schools. This is all one payroll. It's all one legal entity. Everybody's W-2, even its teacher still says it, town of Southborough. So schools do their things and then we have to take their payroll and we have to integrate it with ours. So there is definitely some efficiency to be had to improve on, but we still need a full-time person to do this. It may mean that we can reduce hours on the school side, but sitting in this building, I firmly believe we still need the full-time person because of all the things that you have to do with all the different types of payroll we have here. And I've done this for a long time. I wish we could say, oh, just let ADP do it, but it won't work. You still have a person here that will need to do all the integration with ADP, will have to solve the problems, and will still have to check everything. So I don't think you gain anything. In fact, I think it's going to cost you money to do that. So I am not going to support not having the full-time payroll person here. But I would encourage, if the schools are listening, to sit down and see if we can't find a way to make it more efficient. So I don't disagree with Al that it can't be improved on, but I still think we need a full-time person to do the payroll.
Yes.
Al, out of the, what you looked into, what opportunities did you find in front of us for not appointing this or looking at something else? Like what's, I mean, an outside service? You and I briefly discussed the need to still have somebody internally doing a level of management. So what do you see as the opportunity here to possibly look at this alternately?
So there are a couple. So for example, in modern payroll processing, you don't have a clerk who enters what I'll describe as the administrative data, withholding data, the number of exemptions, your address, that sort of thing. That's all done by users and that's very common. Then we have, you know, today we're doing significant double entry. As I said, you know, we have stuff that's done, still done on paper. You know, we do the withholding, whereas in fact, an outside service can do all of the withholding and reporting. And, you know, when I talked to Brian, you know, there are a couple of companies that actually specialize in providing payroll services to the public sector. Who, in Massachusetts, I guess there are two, and they are moving in the same direction that the paychecks and the ADPs have over the last 20 years, where, you know, we're able to remove significant portions of the administrative burden. Will there still be a need for someone to assist in a measure of payroll? Yes. I mean, so my experience is, I ran a small company and I did the payroll and I hired paychecks to do it for me. And it was a superb service and they were able to handle quite sophisticated payrolls, more sophisticated than we needed. But yeah, my job was to basically wire the money every two weeks and provide them with hours. And that was really about it. We just, we cannot continue to do the same old sort of things as, you know, and, and, and then go and ask the taxpayers for more money. We've got to move into the 21st century. There is definitely opportunity for better integration with the schools. I frankly recommend that we tell the schools what they have to do rather than simply say, well, the schools don't want to do this. And I'd simply say, if you want paychecks issued to your employees, these are our requirements and these are what you must do. And we need to do things like that. You know, if we're going to achieve efficiencies, that, those efficiencies have to flow to the bottom line. That's just all there is to it. And, you know, until we, actually, as I said, I would support hiring a temp in the current role until we come up with a plan for how we're going to make our payroll processing more efficient. And then we can talk about whether we need a full-time person or not. But, you know, to bring on a full-time person to continue operating this old creaky machine, because that's the way the old creaky machine has always worked, is unacceptable to me.
So here's how I come down on it. I think Brian Ballantyne's view on this holds a lot of weight with me. And remember, the only reason this is here is the incumbent resigned towards the end of July. So for me to think through the whole, I mean, this is like when I was on advisory, this is something where you would look at this for an entire budget cycle to think about whether you would make a change like this. And so I just have to defer to the recommendation of Brian on this. And I think that the person who's been identified for this position looks like an outstanding person, so I support this appointment.
This is beyond this discussion, but since Marcy's sitting here, the Chair of Advisory, I think it'd be a good job for advisory to take a look at trying to reintegrate some of the town and school functions that used to... some of the town and school functions that used to be integrated, then got separated, um, in view of trying to save some money, so, and this would be one of them. Um, the other is facilities, and the third one is, is tech. But, um, I, you know, Al may have one company, I've got, I've probably have three hundred clients with paychecks ADP, so, um, I've seen lots go wrong with pay, things, and this is a complex payroll, and there's nothing more important than making sure that people get paid the way they're supposed to get paid.
I-
It's okay, I'm done.
Okay, I just wanted to say apropos of that, that I've talked about, um, basically outsourcing the payroll with a number of people who are employed by the town, and I know some people are used to doing things certain ways, but I think that it really improves the, the quality of an employee's existence, to be able to call and talk to somebody on the phone who works in the town, who has longevity with the town, who understands the process, who isn't gonna call them back in, within twenty-four hours with an answer. Um, I just think it improves the quality of life for the employees, and I don't know if the, um, companies that you mentioned, Al, that do municipalities were doing cities, which would be a whole different order of, you know, magnitude, but I, I do know that, that the employees in the town appreciate having someone they know on a first-time basis, uh, know on a first-name basis to talk to about, um, payroll situations.
Well, not to, but this is important, okay, not to, I agree with Al about, yes, um, so I'll disagree with you a little bit on this, Marguerite, it's kind of like, um, you know, who goes into a bank much anymore? Not like you used to, right? You do everything online. Um, so I'm all for upgrading the payroll system so that people do input their own deductions, they change them, they change your address, you have to do that, that is great, um, as much as we can do, as far as that goes, so I'm all for upgrading the software to make sure we've got state-of-the-art that really applies to municipalities, but I still think you need the in-house person to run the whole thing.
Okay, I move that the board appoint, um, Christine Russell to the position of Business Administrator, one payroll and benefits to Treasurer Collector Department.
Second.
Okay, um, Dennington, aye?
Landry, aye.
Fling, aye.
Hamilton, no.
Okay. Okay, and, um, Kathy, you held consent agenda item G?
Yeah, um, we got an email from Mr. Litt to remind us that part-
Thank you. We got an email from Mr. Litt to remind us that part of the MTC bylaw states that they are supposed to be involved in any decisions on the SCADA. Am I saying it right to him? SCADA, it's long A, SCADA system. Um, so I, we talked to Matt Probst, and he wrote us an email, and he basically said, yeah, if we are talking about a home, but not in this case, so he, he knows, he's talked to Jay Montijo. Jay's been very involved in what's going on here, is definitely on top of it. Um, so I think that, um, so I definitely support the recommendation from Bill, but it took me a while to get there, and as far as the funding goes to, I think that makes sense, but, um, this is, you know, needs to be done quickly. It's gonna be much more secure, there's gonna be, um, multi-factor authorization, there's going to be, um, a whole lot more security on what we're gonna do, there's gonna be redundancy, et cetera, so it's gonna be an improved system, um, with what we're gonna do here, but Matt has said, nope, this is not MTC, and he has talked to Jay, and he is fully confident that Jay has done his job here working with Bill.
Okay, I moved that the board approve consent agenda item G.
Second.
All right, Dennington, aye?
Landry, aye.
Cook, aye.
Fling, aye.
Hamilton, aye.
Okay, so turning to, um, other matters, so the first is revising the charge for the pre-K to eight school building committee. To be very clear, the only change we're talking about is correcting an administrative error in the charge, where if you remember, when we finalized the appointments, we also extended the charge for the committee through the end of September, but for whatever reason, we didn't make an equivalent change to the expected, uh, you know, delivery date for the decision matrix, so that obviously makes sense, that should also be September thirty. So, anyone have any questions or comments about that? All right, I move that we revise the charge for the pre-K to eight school building committee so that the delivery date for the matrix is end of September, rather than end of August.
Second.
Okay, and, Dennington, aye?
Landry, aye.
Cook, aye.
Fling, aye.
Hamilton, aye.
All right, Kathy, uh, do you wanna talk about the new contract with Southborough Access Media?
I do. Okay, so I thought a little background might be helpful. Um, we have contracted with Southborough Access Media, Inc. since about two thousand and thirteen, when they were first formed, to basically use the funds that the town receives from Verizon, from Charter, and from Comcast for what's called PEG services, Public Educational and Government Services. Um, there's a federal law, um, the FCC, that basically allows this to happen. Um, you know, we've got a contract with each of those companies, that they, um, give us a portion of, um, what they receive from individual customers in the town of Southborough. So those that have, you know, the full service, the full cable, have, if they look at the bill, they'll see a little bit, a little piece of money that gets added, um, that we get to do these services. That's what, um, is employing our young lady over here today. So, we really never had much of a contract before, let me just say that, it was like one piece of paper. Um, there's a state law that basically governs this, so we think we've done it right this time, so this is a proposed five-year contract with SAM. SAM is a totally independent entity, it's a five-one-C-three, um, does its own thing, has its own board. Warren Paley's been on it since the very get-go, Lisa Brascio's on it now, and an attorney named Brian Green. So it's a good board, um, they work hard and are very sincere about what they do. So Sam Stivers worked on this with me too before, um, he was not re-elected. Um, and, um, town council has approved this, we've gone back and forth, we, we got a little bit hung up on indemnification, but they've got that all worked out, so the guts of it are as follows. Um, the money comes into the town, and it's roughly two hundred thousand dollars a year, so it's not a small bit of money, um, and we need to appropriate this money at every town meeting, which we never did before. So it gets appropriated, and it doesn't all automatically get appropriated to SAM, we can decide what to appropriate to them. They are supposed to come, this contract says, they come for us, um, in front of us during the normal budget cycle, um, they basically present a budget, operating and capital, and make a request for what funds they'd like to see for the next year. So, the plan right now is, um, that, and we also wrote in here, that's normally an annual town meeting thing, but since we're delayed, they haven't had, we haven't, they haven't gotten any money in, I think, a year and a half now. We've just been stockpiling, so we've got about two hundred fifty thousand dollars in the bank right now that we've accumulated. So the plan was to, um, possibly, and we can talk about this when we get to the warrant, um, add a warrant article to appropriate at the special town meeting to get them going again. They've got money, they, they had a, um, pretty good stockpile of money from COVID, et cetera, so they're not running our funds at the moment, but they would like to get this going again. So that is for consideration tonight, whether we want to put this on the warrant to actually consider an appropriation to SAM. Second, uh, we've written this in a way that we can also use money for appropriate purposes, um, if we see so, so, um, that we want to do it. And the one thing we've talked about in the last year or so, I mean, this again is with Matt Probst, is, um, adding a high-tech Zoom system to this room. And it would be one that you literally go and push a button, um, and it does everything, it's got great cameras, it's a much better system than what we have used in the past, certainly beats the owl, um, for sure. Remember the owl, um, and you wouldn't have SAM having to do what they're doing right now, so it probably would save SAM some money, because you, you would end up not having a person here. It would all be automatic. Matt Probst is, um, um, very bullish on this system, um, I've seen it, um, Jay Montijo's seen it, so the people have seen it, really like it, so it's about eighty thousand bucks. Kate Donahue had put in an earmark request to get us thirty for this, I don't think she got it. No one's ever said she did, so I assume she didn't. If she'd gotten it, she would have told us, I think, yes, I don't think she got it. So we'll have to pay for this, so we've got two hundred fifty thousand dollars, so we can appropriate that at the special town meeting too. We'll have to get Matt Probst involved again pretty quickly, but that was at least the plan a few months ago, um, is to update this room, so you really have a true state-of-the-art, um, recording system. Okay? Of course.
Questions? So there, the contract talked about membership fees and membership-
But they don't, I mean, they could, this is SAM again, they, you know, they could go out and raise money other ways too, if they wanted to, they don't, and I don't think they've got any plans to, but it's there in case they want to. Um, so they've got the ability to, um, do other things if they want to, to generate additional revenue, which would be theirs to spend as they, they chose.
Okay, that's the only question I had. Sure, go ahead.
My question, um, is, with the, uh, updated Zoom system for this room, would the purchasing of that be done through SAM or MTC, or how would it be done?
Mostly through with MTC support, Jay Montijo. He'd be in charge of getting it all installed, getting it purchased, doing the bidding, et cetera.
I think your question is, who, would SAM pay for the system?
It'd come out of this money that we collect, so we would just keep enough money in that pot to be able to pay for it. So, you know, SAM would not have anything to do with actual purchasing it, but we would use the funds from the PEG receipts we have.
So it'd make SAM programming, like, better, easier?
Yeah, it's a pretty, it's a pretty neat system.
It would benefit, it's SAM would benefit the town too.
Yeah, yeah, we think so.
Does it be a lot like the, um, the system at the Public Safety Building?
It'd be even better. It does a lot, a lot of things, it's camera angles, it's really a very, um, very, very nice system.
Tim?
Um, did I miss the final number that this is? Are we approving, uh, the two hundred and fifty thousand, or?
No, all we're doing tonight is approving the contract with SAM.
Although one of the things that we can talk about when we get to the last point on other matters is should we put in a placeholder-
Yeah.
-for an appropriation of.
Okay.
And then you'd have to make clear that it's not really a, it's more of a transfer of money that we already have.
Yeah, so this doesn't affect your tax bill at all, it's money that we collect, and we have to use for a certain purpose.
Okay, so, go ahead.
I was only, only gonna say, it's not in this contract, but something I do want to bring up is to have a consolidation of the Zoom, the YouTube rooms, which we already said about earlier, but just want to say again, to consolidate the Zoom rooms, don't have Southborough Remote Meetings, and SAM just have Southborough Remote Meetings for all of our meetings going forward, so when you look for something, you can find it and not have to go, which page is this on? But that's not part of this contract, it's just something that's related to it.
So, you know, I said talk to, I think you ought to talk to Jay first, um, and get his buy-in on doing this and how to do it, and then, um, probably bring SAM in, but Jay would know how to, Jay would be the person to start with.
You agree, Mark?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, like that, along with the room here, one-button touch is joining, again, not part of the SAM thing, but related to it, but, yeah.
Okay, so my other question was, um, are there ongoing fees for the system or repair or maintenance? And would you put one at the senior center as well?
Okay, well, let's back up a little bit too, so SAM is headquartered right now at Trotter. Um, it's a built-out space, does for, for SAM, they actually use Trotter Kids, Trotter Kids go down there to help out, they learn things, they get cr- class credit for the things they do, so it's a pretty neat setup. They pay rent, SAM pays rent too, that's part of their rent revolving account, um, so it's, there's, they've got a lease. Um, they, the equipment that you see down there is equipment SAM has bought with the money they have gotten from the town, it's on their books, illegally they own it. Um, but in here, we've dealt with what happens if they go out of existence, you know, we, we, what happens to that equipment. Okay, so, um, we haven't talked about the senior center, um, yet, we thought we'd do this room first and see how it turns out, um, but of course, the next place to consider would be the senior center. We've got public safety under control, so do this one and then see, see what we think.
Al, you have any questions, comments?
Uh, no comment.
All right. I move that the board approve the SAM contract.
Second.
Uh, Dennington, aye?
Landry, aye.
Cook, aye.
Fling, aye.
Hamilton, aye.
Thank you, everybody.
All right. Okay, this is probably the most, uh, time-intensive item on, on the agenda is, um, we have the memo from the Personnel Board. I think, um, Jason did a really good job of kind of framing the background of this issue. I mean, one, an issue that has me, you know, worried, something I worry about from time to time is the, you know, the fair, fairness of, um, the SAP, particularly for a certain, you know, longtime employees, and we've had, uh, you know, I've seen it now since when I was on the Advisory Committee pre-COVID, seen everything changed after COVID, so many people coming and going. Um, and it really is the case that for any time, particularly department heads losing a department, every new person who's come in, and you want good people, they're always significantly, they're coming in at a higher rate, they're more expensive than their replacements, and there's really a cost to turnover, and you look at, you know, the longer you've been on the board, the lo- you know, you know, you recognize all or almost all of the names on this list of people, these are people we really want to keep, and, um, I feel like often we're just kind of skating, um, when we're just, you know, you would not be surprised if some, some of the people said, look, I've just, I found a better pay rate at a different community, that's happened to us before, so, the idea behind the, doing the staffing study out of sequence a little bit earlier from the, um, Personnel Board before was to spend a little bit of money to come up with a way that was more neutral and, um, you know, from a third party about how you would do kind of what the Personnel Board has recommended they're doing here. But, um, basically, this is a targeted proposal to help, um, appropriately compensate a certain kind of group of people who were hired in the particular time period who haven't gotten some of the benefits of the most recent changes to the, um, SAP. And at the end, you know, the decision point for us is one, what do we want to do with this? Do we want to do nothing? Do we want to bring it for, uh, forward for the special fall town meeting? And ask that, um, we fund the, um, out of free cash, uh, either paying for what Personnel recommends, either effective January first, two thousand twenty-six, or retroactive to July first, two thousand twenty-five, or just wait and deal with this for the budget process for FY twenty-seven, and that would then go to the annual fall town meeting. So, I mean, my, my own view is I would favor, uh, putting this on the agenda for the fall town meeting and, and asking to use free cash to fund it as of January first, two thousand twenty-six. Um, Al, what, what do you think?
Uh, I, I agree with you, Andrew, you know, we need to have a competitive, uh, we need to be competitive in the, in the environment that we are, the, the SAP, I think, is, it's in many respects, respect, uh, uh, reflective of, of, of a reality that no longer exists.
Uh, Tim, any questions, or?
No, I mean, I like the idea of a vote, so I'm supportive of that idea.
All right, and this is always kind of strange, because, you know, so many of our employees are on collective bargaining agreements, and we have those which are often approved, you know, there's a lot of bargaining that goes on, and then at the select board level, it's, you know, approved fairly quickly, and then the SAP just gets all this attention and scrutiny for a relatively smaller number of employees who are also very important. Marguerite?
I support, um, moving this forward as quickly as possible.
Kathy?
So now I know why you're here tonight, I couldn't figure out, um, why you're here. We always want to, you know, we wonder why people are here, so welcome. Um, unanimous vote from Personnel Board, correct? Unanimous vote from Personnel Board to do this? It sounds like in Jason's, okay, so, um, I would agree with everything that got said, um, so far. I would actually go further though, I'd say, um, July first, twenty-five, so that's not, to me, the debate is at seven-one or one-one-twenty-six, I understand the money. Um, these are all highly valued employees, and notice the one that has been here the longest happens to be sitting in the room with us. Um, I think we are in danger of losing some of these people, um, and we have seen this happen where, you know, the replacement came in, uh, had to, we had no choice, to pay a lot more than what the departing person paid. Um, still got good people, but i- it happens, and I don't want that to happen, um, here again, so I do think this is a step in the right direction to try to get things squared away. Um, I was very disappointed that we did not pass the twenty-five K for the study. Um, we didn't know it wasn't gonna pass, so we didn't make much of a case for it, then the vote, and it was too late. Um, so, we, you know, we could have made a case of why we needed it a year early, but we didn't. Um, so now we, um, just need to rely on the Personnel Board to make their recommendations, so I think the question, Andrew, is, is there a majority for one-one or majority for seven-one?
Well, before that, I also think it's, um, worth thanking the Personnel Board and Vanessa and Mark for working with the Personnel Board on this, because, um, you know, this must have, and Brian, and this must have taken some, you know, careful thought to how to come up with this proposal, um, and doing it obviously for, for- um, and doing it obviously for, for free without, instead of having a consultant do the, the work that, uh, we had originally been asking Town Meeting to pay for. So, to that point, how do people feel about, um, and here we're thinking about what are, it sounds like people wanna put this on the warrant, and would we, would the proposal be, um, the delta between these is, um, thirty, thirty thousand?
Thirty-three thousand, yep.
Okay.
Thirty-three versus sixty-six.
Yeah, so you, you, um, here, here's my, the reason why I, I, one of the reasons why I favor, um, January first is, um, I wanna start thinking about, like, for the next budget cycle up here, how we start to maybe offset the additional costs of these. Is there another place in the budget where we can find to start to offset it instead of, you know, I feel like, feel like we have to do this, but I don't like the idea of heading into the FY twenty-seven budget cycle feeling like we're behind, we're already behind. So I think maybe just beginning with, uh, January first, I think it also sends an important signal to, um, the employees that, you know, this is coming, it's coming on January first. So I think that balances, you know, the interest of the taxpayers here and also what we need to do in terms of, um, the employees.
You know, Andrew, your argument about the budget fiscal twenty-seven, um, the full thing's gonna be affect that year, so it's not gonna change. What we do now, July first or January first ain't gonna change that. The full year will be, um, um, implemented at that point. So the question is, how do you wanna affect, well, okay, I'll take it back, because it's gonna, free cash, your free cash is gonna go down, okay, so you're right, okay, so it would affect it, so never mind.
How do you feel, Tim, Jan- January first?
January first.
January first?
We're talking twenty-twenty, January first, twenty-twenty-five.
Twenty-six.
Yeah.
Okay.
Either prospectively, Marguerite, to January first or retroactively to July first.
As opposed to July twenty, July first.
Yeah.
Well, I.
Al, what, what do you think? Can you hear me?
Hello?
Yes, can you, can you hear me?
Oh, okay, yeah. Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, so we're asking about, would you in the?
January first.
January first, okay, so I think there's three for January first.
So it's a moot point, Marguerite.
Took, took a long time to decide, so. It's a hard one, but I understand.
Yeah, and so I'm just glad it would be done, so I, I'm definitely not going to med on this one, but, um, so.
Okay, so I move that we put on our, uh, warrant, and it's already on there, a placeholder for it, but that we have a warrant article asking Town Meeting to appropriate the funding for this proposal, starting, out of free cash, starting on January first, two thousand twenty-six.
Second.
Um, Dennington, aye?
Landry, aye. Hook, aye.
Ling, aye.
Hamilton, aye.
All right, I thought there would be more discussion about that, but it seemed like we're all on the same point. Okay, um, the next item might also be kinda short, but I'll turn it over to, uh, Mark. You know, one of the things that we talked about at our goal-setting meeting is, you know, there's a lot of things on our agenda that are really more ministerial administrative, how can we, are, some of these things we'd love to delegate to Mark, what legally can we delegate to him? Um, so we can become more efficient, and Mark's had a discussion with Jay Tallerman about that and can update us.
Yeah, so thank you. The, um, the Cliff Note version of the answer is not a lot. Um, I, I had taken, uh, and, and Mr. Hamilton had done a, a nice job, I think, of articulating a large amount of, of the, of the things that, um, you know, he thought, you know, we could look at delegating, um, staff took a look, uh, back through some agendas and consent list items, and took a look at those things. Um, a lot of things, you know, are the responsibility of the Board, um, by statute. Um, and, you know, there are, there are certain things that simply can't be delegated. Um, the reoccurring theme that kept coming back is, obviously, the best way to do this would be through a special act. The second best way would be to do it through the bylaw, and then the, the way that gives the least amount of, of ability to do things is obviously through select board vote. Um, so it's, you know, and again, we looked at things from water abatements, um, pay rate changes, um, accepting gifts, um.
That's one that's certainly.
Yeah, exactly, and, and, you know, accepting gifts, statutory function of the select board, general law, chapter forty-four, section fifty-three A, can't be delegated. Right, so, um, and then, you know, there was some of the personnel items, um, and, um, when I had looked at those, um, Kate had provided some answers back, and, um, it, it can't be delegated, you know, to me entirely, there's, there's, there's some things that haven't been tested, um, by, um, by law. You know, there hasn't been a case, there's no case law on some of this stuff, so it's a little uncharted territory. Um, and then she went on va- Kate's on vacation, so I haven't had a chance to follow up with her in any more detail about some of this, but I, I, I think this is gonna take a little bit more thought. Um, Jay and Kate both understand what we're trying to do here. Um, so I think we need to, to take a look at this a little bit more, you know, happy if the Board wants to assign a member, you know, to sit with, to sit with me and to sit with council, um, you know, to try to, um, you know, try and, and navigate a path that will work here, whether it's gonna be through a bylaw, through a vote of the Board. Um, you know, wanna make sure that whatever you do is, is sustainable.
Can I just add to that a little bit?
Sure.
There are things such as, um, accepting of gifts where if you do it, there's no public record of the fact that it was done, right?
Mm-hmm.
So when we do it, everyone knows that St. Mary's Credit Union gave us seven hundred and fifty dollars, and Eagle Lissing gave us a thousand dollars. I think this is important parts of public record, independent of whether, you know, law allows it, and I, I think that, um, personnel items, again, I, we're not talking about the trees anymore, I mean, that frees up hundreds of hours, right? I think that it's very good that a lot of these things are discussed in a meeting that, that the public has access to. Mark, not that your judgment wouldn't be fantastic, but I really do think these are important pieces of town business that the select board should discuss publicly.
Well, do you think there's enough there, or is there not enough there to consider, like, a, a fall time meeting warrant article of just, there, there's at least three or four things where we could, no?
No, I, I, I'd have to talk to Jay and see if there's a way to put something together, but again, I don't think you wanna rush something either.
All right.
Um, you know, I'd, I'd, I'd prefer, I'd prefer to try to get it right, so.
Okay.
I think there's more conversation needs to be, so it's really not ready, it's really not ready for prime time for, for this board yet.
Well, I don't wanna bring forth an article that's got two or three peddly things in it and make, you remember the year that, um, Hagerty wanted to, he had a bylaw where he wanted to be able to make Scribner's changes to things?
Yes.
And remember, um, not to pick on Beth Mallow's husband, but he made a motion that he didn't wanna, he wanted the select board to do that. And we said, no, we don't have, we don't have time to do this, and so we.
He could, he could do it, but you then had to approve his changes.
Yeah, yeah, so, um, so at least we didn't have to do that. Um, so, I don't know, maybe this is not going to accomplish what, uh, we had hoped, um, if there's only a handful of things.
I, I, I had, I had more hope going into this until I gave him the list and it came back with, can't do this, select board has to do this, can't do this, can't do, so, it was more, it was more noes than maybes. Um, I don't know that there was a straight yes on the whole thing, so, um, we're gonna have to continue to take a look at this.
Surprisingly.
Um, I, I guess I have a slightly different view. Uh, I'd like to proceed here because I think the, um, the, the little things get in the way of us dealing with some of the bigger issues that the town has to face. And, um, you know, there, it, it makes it difficult in particular for people who are significantly younger than I am, or people who aren't retired, to actually participate in this role. It's, you know, a real time sink, and if, you know, I'd like to see our, our, our time spent on things which are significant as opposed to ministerial. Every time I hear the word ministerial, I think this is wasting my time. Um, and, you know, I've only got so many hours left on this earth, and, and I wanna, want those hours to be used productively in important things, not ministerial activities. Uh, and I think that is even more important for people who are, you know, have young kids or, you know, families and, and are working. It makes it very difficult for those folks to participate when they get bogged down in these, uh, quite frankly, uh, in many cases, trivial items. You know, yes, we can certainly still acknowledge the town administrator after he accepts the gift and his report, say, I accepted the following gifts, greatly appreciated. But, um, I, I think I would put the burden on Town Council, you know, Town Council's very good at saying, no, you can't do this, no, you can't do that. I think we ought to put the burden on Town Council to say, this is what we wanna do, tell us how we do it, and prepare the paperwork and the process. Um, you know, I think that's certainly how I work with lawyers in the private sector, you know, I, I explain what I wanna do, and then, uh, unless I'm blatantly violating the law, you know, I kind of expect them to help me navigate how I, I, I achieve that goal. And I think we ought to task Town Council with saying, you know, I provided a list, and Mark, I think, you know, the staff has provided a list, merge the two lists together and say to Jay, we would like to do these things, tell us how to get it done. And then come back and tell us, uh, as opposed to simply, uh, giving Town Council a veto, that, that, that's not effective counsel, in my opinion.
I am kind of on the same page with Marguerite as far as some of these, so I don't think these take that much time. We got the consent agenda where we can put a lot of things on there, and we use that pretty effectively. Um, but I, I do agree with her that once we delegated the tree, um, trees, that helped a whole lot, that was the, I mean, that was a time. That was, okay, so we got that done, right, and did that right, um, but there's not, if you look tonight, um, I think everything we did was pretty important, and then there's stuff on the consent agenda.
Well, for example, the police officer appointments are very important, but they're, I mean, I think we, that's something we might consider of. I mean, it's a very different, we don't do this for fire appointments, right? So, I think there you would consider, uh.
Okay.
You know?
I think new employees in departments like that, when they come to a select board meeting, the whole town meets them rather than just Mark saying, welcome aboard. I think that's important.
So I, I'm willing to look, dig a little bit more into this, and then looking at what the list that you had and, you know.
And Al's right, if you say to Jay, look, we actually want to do this, so figure out how to do it, he, it might be a different answer than just reading, you can't delegate donations.
A- and I think Jay is, is, you know, Jay understands from looking at this list what you wanna do, but again, I think you just need to give him the direction on what you're willing to do to get there. Um, and, and again, that, you know, because this will affect me, you know, I'd prefer basically to step back from, you know, that, I'm happy to facilitate, but I really don't think I should be involved in those conversations, 'cause again, you know, this, this affects my day-to-day.
Okay, well, maybe Al and I can talk further to.
You two have been delegated this, right? I mean, you're, this, this is your goal, right?
Well, in our discussion about it, I mean, there's, there's a bunch of related issues. One is clear, clearing some of these things off of the select board agenda, right? The other is the organization of the boards and committees in the town. Like, if you look at the annual report, that book, and you flip it open to the first or second page, there's the town organization chart. And I think you could easily make it to point it out, and most people would chuckle at how complicated it is. When you dig, there's actually really small, like, two-point font notations in that chart that show site to statutes. So you can see of all those boards, which of those you legally, they have to be independently elected, which one can become appointed, et cetera. So that's another related issue. And then the third is the structure of the departments within the town, right? So, and that's something we can talk about on September second, right? This is, this is nothing where you can't just, like, throw it together, this is not something for just a fall town meeting vote, and, and there's some sensitivity about if we are too involved in this, you fear that a lot of people are gonna think, oh, this is the select, we're just trying to centralize, um, decision-making more. I mean, there's some very good reasons to try to streamline things more, particularly when you go to the ballot at the annual town meeting, and you're just, like, eighty percent of the positions are on a post, you know? A lot of people, at all, times you're like, what is that position? I don't even understand what I'm going on. So, um, that's what we've been talking about. We can talk further about it on September second. Okay, Al, um, should we turn now to the CPA discussion? So, at our goal-setting meeting, one of the things we talked about, we felt there was time to have a discussion about the CPA. You know, this, this board, we have swung, there have been changes of opinion a lot about the CPA over the last five years. If you look, you know, one of the goals two or three years ago was to go to the, uh, town meeting and talk about recommending an increase in the CPA surcharge to three percent. And part of the thinking will, had to do with the, um, hi, so Lisa, you've arrived at the right time, so I was just talking about the CPA and saying, and we haven't begun the discussion yet, by just saying that, you know, the views on the board about this have changed a lot over time, right? Um, at one point, there's been discussion about increasing the CPA surcharge to three percent, and then I think that has, you know, lost some momentum in the last two or three years, you know, there's, we have a lot of fiscal challenges, and, you know, Al has been very focused on this. Um, so we felt like it was appropriate to have a discussion, since we've been had so many different positions, it seems like, over the years. And think about it in the overall perspective of, you know, what's the most efficient way to use taxpayer dollars? So, Al, I know you prepared a set of slides about this, and if you wanna put them up and lead us through them. Um, I know that, I also wanna acknowledge, you know, we got a letter from the CPC, um, that continues, I believe, that they wanna support the CPA surcharge as is, and the planning board has the same view. And, uh, there were some slides that Lisa, um, gave on behalf of the CPC that I distributed, it's all in the packet, so everyone should have those as well. So with that, um, Al, I'll turn it over to you. Vanessa, do you have his, um, presentation?
Uh, Vanessa's gonna make me, uh, a co-host and then, uh.
Okay.
Yeah. Oh. Um, Vanessa? Okay, you can go to the next slide. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
All right, so just, just quick background, um, we, um, when we adopted CPA, uh, we, there's basically a real estate, uh, surcharge of between one and three percent. There are some exemptions, and the state provides a match to those, the, those, uh, surcharges. The monies are restricted to four broad areas, historic preservation, open space, community housing, and recreation. Southborough was an early adopter, Town Meeting, uh, voted to approve a one percent surcharge in May of two thousand three. When it was passed, the state provided a hundred percent match, or essentially fifty, for every dollar we put in, the state put in a dollar. So it's a fifty percent, they, the state provided fifty percent of the money. Today, in fiscal twenty-six, the state will provide about thirteen point six percent of the funds raised. And so, it, I think it's appropriate to discuss whether we want to continue, given that the circumstances under which we approved the program have changed. So can we go to the next slide, please? So this is a, a summary of, um, the surcharges collected and the state match. What you'll see is, is that the surcharges locally collected have risen from, uh, almost a hundred, by almost a hundred thousand dollars, while the state match has declined by almost a hundred thousand dollars, which means that our net has been fairly constant. We can go to the next slide, please. If you look at it over the last five years, the state match has fallen by over fifty percent from twenty-nine point six percent to thirteen point nine percent of the monies raised. And, um, there's no secret as to why this is, you have more and more towns joining the CPA, uh, chasing essentially a, a relatively fixed pool of money. Go to the next slide, please. Uh, the CPA is allowed to charge up to five percent for administration. The CPA is allowed to charge up to five percent for administration, and if you took at the net of administration, uh, the number has fallen by over seventy percent, from twenty-seven point three percent to eight point six percent. Um, and, uh, that administrative charge, uh, does not capture all of the min- administrative, expenses associated with the program and in particular, uh, things like accounting and, uh, there are, in the area where I have some expertise, uh, affordable housing, the, the constraints are, are substantial. So, we can go to the next slide, please. So, could we withdraw from the CPA, and the answer is yes, we could, by the same process we adopted it. That is a vote of town meeting and a vote at the ballot. Would the town be able to repurpose the surcharged money? Well, that's a different question. The surcharge in fiscal twenty-six was four hundred and eighty-one thousand, seven hundred and forty-two dollars. Now, I think it's important to recognize that we have historically used a portion of this surcharge to pay debt. And whether we pay the debt from, um, the surcharge money or, or, or from the general fund, we're going to have to pay the debt because we incurred, we borrowed the money and we've got to pay it back. In fiscal twenty-six, the, uh, that number came to two hundred and seventy thousand dollars, which would have left a balance of two hundred and eleven dollars and seven, and set, two hundred and eleven, seven hundred and five dollars. Uh, and those would need to be, those funds would need to be appropriated by the normal process. I should note that I don't believe we have any particular requirement to actually year on and year in, uh, appropriate the monies for the debt we've already appropriated and when we voted to borrow the money. Uh, we can move, move to the next slide, please. So, what could we have done with two hundred and eleven thousand, seven hundred and five dollars and fifty, in FY twenty-six? We could raise taxes by four hundred and eighty-one thousand, seven hundred and forty-two dollars without impacting people's tax bills. There would be some minor deltas because of the exemptions. After funding the debt, we'd still have two hundred and eleven thousand dollars left over. That's enough money to pay for two police officers. It's all, or alternately, it's enough money to, um, make a significant progress in funding our road funding gap. Uh, you know, currently, our current appropriation in chapter ninety is about a hun- ninety thou- nine hundred thousand dollars a year. And the amount we've identified that would allow us to actually, uh, maintain the roads the way we'd like to is about one point two million, so that two hundred and eleven thousand would be a significant chunk of that. Or perish the thought, we could give the money back to the taxpayers. Uh, what that would mean is, is the projects contemplated for the CPA, CPA funding would have to, compete on the same level playing field as all of the other priorities for spending in town. So, we can go to the next slide, please. Uh, one thing I'll note is, is that the debt service for this, that's supported currently by the CPA will decline over time. This is just a, a picture of how, what it looks like, it, it, it tapers off in fiscal thirty-nine to forty-four. And what that would mean is, and again, I've made a very simple, uh, simple-minded forecast, using the, uh, five point four five compound annual growth rate, that's the, uh, growth rate in the, surcharge, uh, from fiscal twenty-two to fiscal twenty-six. We would see, uh, the CPA's surcharge net of debt would be substantial, rising, you know, up to forty-four, which is not a year I have to worry about, um, uh, close to a million dollars. So, next slide, please. So, I have to bring this up. Uh, the program in Southborough has been ineffectively administered. There are twenty-two projects that have been approved by town meeting between April two thousand and seven and March twenty nineteen, that should have been completed, but still have open balances that have not been returned to the CPA. The total is a hundred and forty-four thousand, five hundred and thirty-one dollars. Of those, four thousand dollars of the taxpayers' money is over fifteen years old. Fourteen thousand is between ten and fifteen years old. And a hundred and twenty-six thousand is between six and ten years old. These are monies that were appropriated years ago and should have been spent for some worthy purpose, but haven't been. But that worthy purpose has apparently been satisfied, uh, and these funds should be returned to the CPA in their appropriate bu- buckets. This problem has for several years been flagged by the town auditor. Uh, and in spite of multiple requests, there has been little to no progress in resolving this. I, I do need to, from personal experience, say that the, I think the application process is cumbersome and inefficient. Uh, the applications for town, for annual town meeting are due at the end of August, eight months before the annual town meeting. Uh, this makes the state look efficient, uh, in, in their one stop. The entire town budget is usually completed in a period of about four months. And finally, the CPA commission is responsible for substantial sums, but is not accountable to any elected board or official. So, next slide, so I, I, we need to address this one way or the other. Uh, so, what are our options? We could do nothing. Uh, we could increase the surcharge from, to two percent or even three percent. There are benefits to some communities that have a three percent surcharge. The state matching happens in a three-round process. Eighty percent of the CPS, CPA funds are allocated based on a single matching rate. For company, country, for communities that adopt the three percent rule are eligible for second and third round funding, which constitutes about twenty percent of the funds. Those three percent communities are divided into ten deciles, with preferences given to smaller and less affluent communities. Given that particular algorithm, it is unlikely that Southborough would be favored by this algorithm. You know, we are not a less affluent community. We had, every time we go to the state, they remind us that we are not a less affluent community. We had a long conversation with, uh, the state in the wastewater meeting, and it was very clear to me that the state has no interest in, in helping us build a wastewater plant. Uh, there will, you know, that there were no grants from the usual suspects. So, finally, we could ask the town meeting and the voters if they want to sunset this program or whether they want to continue. That's, those are sort of the choices that, that face us. That's my, uh, quick summary of, uh, where we stand.
Alright, so we could open up our discussion on Ross, or I know, uh, Lisa, who's the chair of the CPC is here and, you know, you sent us a letter, do you want to comment on that, or?
I would love to, I just didn't know if you wanted me to wait until after you comment.
Can we comment first so she can kind of, um, hear everybody?
Okay, that makes sense. Uh, do you want to begin, Kathy?
I'd be happy to. So, Al, I've taken a look at, um, everything that's available on the state website, and the match for twenty-five is expected to be sixteen percent, and they think it's going to go up. Remember, it's funded by fees that are paid at the registry, it's fifty dollars for all deeds and twenty-five dollars for liens. Um, that got dealt, that used to be, um, twenty and ten, so they've, they've taken great strides to try and increase revenue. But they do think that, um, I guess, housing closings are picking up, um, so they think it's going to go up, they think it may be more than that sixteen percent. And I still say that sixteen percent is still a good return on money. I'd love to get sixteen percent on my money, I mean, you only get three or four percent for interest, so it's still a pretty good return. Now, I agree that the right math is to subtract the admin cost, the five percent we put away from that. So, when you do that, it does get, get lower, but it's still a pretty good return. So, my, um, I still support the, the CCP, CPA and will continue. I was a real advocate of three percent for a couple of years, as was Andrew Faff on advisory. Um, the previous incarnation of CPC was all for it too, they just draw a poll that year and they, they all voted for the three percent. Um, Al's right, we'd be in probably decile nine, um, so we wouldn't get that much of a bonus for three percent, but we'd get something. Um, so you wouldn't get just three times, you'd get a little bit more too. So, um, we get seventy-three thousand dollars right now, uh, seventy-eight last year, this, next year, we're going to get seventy-three as a projection. That still pays for a person in this town. Um, so, you know, and forget, I mean, I'm overlooking the, the reason you do this is because of, the projects that get funded that are good for this town, that we want, et cetera. I've always been in the camp that, um, the money should be used for projects we would have funded anyway. There's people that disagree with me, like Mark Murphy used to disagree with that, he thinks we should have funded things that we wouldn't have done. But as long as we're funding things that we need to do anyway, um, and you get the smash, I'm still in favor of this. I'm, I'm still in the camp that we want to do three, um, instead of one. But I would say that the, the part that I really agree with Al on is, um, and let me just say this, I know Lisa's working on this, she's called me and told me. Um, so, we do want to see all those old projects closed out because you put money back in the buckets, right? There's a reason to do it, there's a financial reason, so I do want to see that done. And I would like to see, um, a review of the admin costs, just to make sure you really think you're spending that productively and you're getting out of that what you need to. Carla McCallum can do all the accounting for this, you don't really need someone to do that piece of it, and she's got to do it anyway, no matter what gets done inside, she's got to do it. So, those are my two things, the, the main though, is to get all these old, um, projects closed out so we can put more money back in the buckets. I don't know where you get money for affordable housing if we don't do this, um, you know, this is where it's coming from, is from, from the surcharge. So, I am of the camp that, and I know I'm going to have trouble for saying this, I got in trouble with the school project, that when you're talking about a hundred dollars on an average tax bill, I just don't think it moves the needle for people as far as how they look at their taxes. I don't think they go, okay, I'm okay with ten thousand, but I'm not okay with ten thousand, one hundred. You're just not okay with ten thousand, one hundred, period, and ten thousand, and the hundred doesn't make a difference in how you look at your tax bill. Um, and I do think it goes for really good stuff, and the, I think Lisa gave us in her presentation a whole list of things that have been done. And there's some very, very good things that have been done in this town with that money over the last twenty years, so.
I'm, I'm of the mindset that, um, I like the CPA, I think it does a lot of good for things that wouldn't get funded otherwise. But there's also been some places I've seen the money go that maybe it could have stayed in the column and grown to do something better in the future. So, it's kind of looked at kind of both sides of the fence. I'm of the mindset every dollar counts, so when you're looking at your tax bill, a hundred dollars here, a hundred dollars there, it starts to add up. Um, so, I'm, I'd like to see some more about it, I'd like to hear, like, some more about, like, what the numbers and stuff look like. But I mean, I'd be of the mindset today that this is something that I'd be willing to maybe sunset and, plan for in the budget cycle to do something with a little bit less restrictions. Maybe we do something where there's not, um, conservation restriction on some stuff, because that's a perpetual thing on some of these things, and it's a part of this program that is good and bad, um, there's limitations to it. So, I'd be curious to know, like, if we would maybe take a commitment in a different way. Um, obviously, we don't have state matches, but maybe we could do things that would be outside of this program that we haven't been able to talk about or do, but would be in the spirit of what we're trying to do. So, I think that there's an opportunity, in my opinion here, to consider this in multiple ways, and, and one of those could be maybe just, move away from it, especially at the thirteen to sixteen percent match versus a hundred.
Marguerite?
Um, m- my thought is that everything the CPC brings forward goes to the town meeting for a vote. Um, and so, really, it's the taxpayers who are voting on what they want done. And my other thought is, if you removed all of the CPC or town meeting agreed, projects in this town that have been done and went back to what it was like before, this town would look a lot worse than it does now. This building looks good, the library front was crumbling, it's been fixed. Um, the Beals preserve the bell tower, I mean, some people love each thing, some people hate each thing, but the people voted that they really wanted to spend this money to make their public spaces better. And I think there's no other way you can get a lot of that done. So, I, I support it, I think it's important, um, to, to look at the accounting part of it and clean that up. And if the application process needs more clarification, that too. Um, but I think that every one of these projects has gone before town meeting for a vote, and some of them passed and some of them didn't, and it's what people want their tax money spent for, that's just my thought on it.
If, if I may, um, Marguerite, there, there is a big difference, um, which is, yes, they all went before town meeting for a vote. But the one thing that the town meeting doesn't get to vote on is the taxes to support them. Now, all of our other appropriations, when we voted on those appropriations, we are voting to raise the taxes. The town, town meeting members do not get to vote on the surcharge. They voted once a long time ago, and so, uh, this is money that is raised essentially in a different process than is raised, uh, in normal appropriations.
I, I don't think it's an onerous, a burden on any taxpayer, but that's just my opinion.
So, just really briefly, um, I, of the options that you laid out there, Al, uh, under the one, do nothing, um, I think there's, meaning just keep the current sur- surcharge the same, that's, that's what I support. Um, I feel good that, um, you know, we're starting to begin taking some steps to make, things as efficiently as possible in terms of working for, as closing out old articles. And, um, you know, I know that for the next cycle of putting together the warrant, we want to have, you know, some of the CPC articles come, sooner rather than later in the process, and I'm, I am very confident that's going to happen. Um, so I feel like, I'm optimistic that, you know, some of the administrative issues are going, headed in, in the right direction. And, you know, there's one comment that Ben Smith made one time when he was talking to the CPC that really stuck with me, is these really are projects that in the everyday, in our usual budget cycle, they would just be all just, you know, put to the side, and I understand what you're saying, Al, you could take all those same projects and, um, you know, put them on the capital article for a town meeting to vote on, and that would be in a way kind of a more pure democratic way of doing it. But, you know, there are other, you know, government systems where there's a set aside that's used for these particular purposes. Um, and I think it's beneficial, I mean, I know from just personal experience that, you know, in the budget cycle where we're often trying to, the goal we have is to have a certain percentage increase from year to year, and there's a list of items on a spreadsheet, and we're just often, you know, almost arbitrarily taking things off, you know, to get to that number. Here, you know, there's some money set aside for these particular type of projects, you know, the one that I worked on, which I, you know, this town rail fence thing that I worked on with, um, Kevin Miller, I know, it's funny because in, town meeting passed it, and then, no one, I don't think spoke against it, and then, you know, some people have come up and like ridiculed it, like, I can't believe we spent a hundred and twenty thousand dollars on a fence, but, hopefully it caused less than that and you can return some of the money, but that's something that, you know, you drive by it, it looks bad, and now we're finally going to take care of it, that's a good thing. So, you know, I think that, um, even though it sounds like a lot of, you know, a majority of us keep, want to keep things the way they are, I don't think it's a bad thing to have this discussion, you know, and, because just the fiscal climate over the last year or two is just very different than it is five or six years before. So, I think we are trying to think about, I mean, Al makes some good points here about, you know, it, it is a way, it is, it is a tax, right, you know? You know, well, sometimes when you justify CPA article at town meeting, you say, well, it's not going to affect your taxes, that's kind of right, but it is all taxpayer money. So, with that said, Lisa?
Thank you, so, I had no intentions of coming tonight, so, uh, I had submitted a letter, uh, on behalf of CPC and some slides, and as I went through, and, and again, I, I appreciate the effort that Mr. Hamilton put into his presentation, I just have a very different viewpoint. And as I went through it, I almost felt like some of the things were a cup half-full. And I felt it was important enough to come here. Um, I think some of these things could have been dealt with, um, and I, I think I said it at the end of my letter. You know, I got a, a lot, a note saying, you know, that this was going to be on the agenda, CPC wasn't necessarily invited, we knew about it, I shared it with the committee. Um, but I think some of the things I'm going to say to you next could have been handled with a discussion before this meeting. And, you know, I know there's been a lot of talk about working in silos, well, our goal as we move forward is to put a lot of things behind us and work in collaboration. I think that's how the taxpayers are best safe, and that's how this CPC feels, very strongly about that. So, I just wanted to touch on a couple of things, we talked about the, um, open and closed projects. And, um, since May, it has been on our agenda, and this CPC has made it a priority to get these projects closed out. We've broken them down, we have a list of projects, seventy-nine thousand dollars that are signage issues, going back, some of the older ones were signage issues. So, we're working on that, we have two members that are crafting signs, we have recreation and golf invited to come to our September meeting. We can get those done, get those signed off. I've spoken to Mr. Purple about some of the town buildings, you know, um, quite a bit of money was put into the flag school, you know? We want to put something there to acknowledge CPC, but I mean, it's not, we have to be very careful of what we put there to stay within the historic nature and character. So, we're working towards all these things, I can.
Can I just have a quick point?
Sure.
So, and this is actually, it is a requirement of the statute, right?
Correct, correct.
CPC-funded, CPA-funded projects have to have a sign saying,
Correct.
This was funded by the CPA.
Correct, so.
It's not like we're just doing it for fun.
Does it go further and say you can't really close out the funding?
Well, it, it's part of the funding, so there's, there's monies built in within, and that's why there's monies left over. So, we've made it a priority to get these things done, you know, we have a, 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 a very energized and very great committee. Not throwing shade on any committee in the past, but, you know, we're focusing. but, you know, we're focusing on, Mr. Hamilton mentioned the application process. We redid the handbook. One of the issues, problems that we ran into last, well, this spring with the annual town meeting was we left the Affordable Housing Trust open, you know, past our normal deadline of when we would have closed the applications. The committee wasn't seated until January. Then we started negotiations on what, you know, what we could maybe want in an article. We had to work with Jay Tallerman, so, you know, again, there were extenuating circumstances. So we went through, and we looked at the handbook, and we said, okay, that doesn't work, and we don't want to do that again. So we have a deadline. Applications are through September fifteenth. It's on the website. The updated handbook is there. By December thirtieth, the board is making, going to make a decision on what projects are going to come forward, which gives us ample time to get the warrant articles drafted, get town, town council to review them, so we can get back into a schedule and make things much easier for Mr. Purple as well. You know, we're going to leave out the exceptions as we've done in the past, you know, but the trust was important to get that done, so, you know, work could be done. Let's see. I just wanted to, and Vanessa, I know you have the slides. Can you put up just the slides so the public can see the fourth slide? These are just some of the projects that CPA funded. And I just wanted to touch on a couple of things, and again, I know you have a full meeting. I was going to read the letter. I'm not going to read the letter. I think we've touched on things that, you know, doing it the way CPC has done many of the projects may not have been possible if it had to compete, and I know that's one of the things Mr. Hamilton suggested. But it's not a level playing field. When you're up against a town building that may need something, or I look at the Fayetteville, Fayetteville Park and the bat, and the pickleball courts at Finn, and I look at the only playground on the south side of town, had those been pitted up against a school that may have needed something, it probably would not have gotten done. So, I mean, I think there's tremendous value, and there's tangible value that we see every day in these. You know, we talked about the bond obligations and the affordable housing. I mean, without CPC, where does it go? You know, we've talked about diversity and equity in housing, and there's now currently over a million dollars sitting, you know, with the trust to be able to actually hopefully do something meaningful and, you know, really help somebody that has a need. And that's crucial, but also eliminating CPA would eliminate that funding source as well. So just a couple of quick things, and again, I, I know and I appreciate you giving me the, the time to, to just touch on a few things. And Kathy, thank you for the sixteen percent, because that, that was one of the things I was going to touch on. One of the things about our admin is, is it's for a minute taker as well. We, our minute taker left, and our minutes are very detailed. Our, our hope is, is that going forward, committees can always look back and see why we made some of the decisions. So most of our minutes are pretty detailed in what we do. I've been trying to do them. It's a lot of work for me to do them, so, so we're going to look at doing that again. The... Okay. And what, again, one of the reasons that CPA was passed originally, when it was passed, was to help fund projects that may not be. So, and again, I, I view CPA projects competing with, with capital items, it, it's not an even playing field. And also, I know that there was question about the process. You know, we're talking, some of these projects, let's talk about the townhouse for a second, two point two million dollars. So we got an application in August, and it took us till town meeting to get it done. Capital reviews projects for years. It takes a lot of time. This was two point two million dollars that we took our time with, and we made sure that the public was well-served by it, as well as, you know, the, the town, that the building itself was well-served. So I don't think the process is too long. I know Mr. Hamilton referenced the one-stop grant. Well, there's a staff. That's what they do, you know? We, we don't have full-time staff, and this isn't our full-time job of what we do, you know? So can you go down to the fourth slide, Vanessa? Sorry. I think the fourth slide is, is very telling of some of the completed projects, you know, the volleyball court, the Peninsula Trail, the irrigation system, the townhouse, the volleyball courts, the All Wars Memorial Lights at Mooney Field. Those may not have ever gotten done, and these are so many things that so many people benefit from, especially, you know, like, again, I'll touch on the South Union Playground. Kinder Group meets there all the time. There are people there all the time. It's the only playground on the south side of town. So we've touched on some of the older, I, I, I know Mr. Hamilton is a hundred and forty-four thousand dollar number. I wish I had the opportunity to talk to him. It's actually seventy-nine thousand that needs to be closed out. The other projects are so ongoing, they were multi-year projects. The invasive species was always envisioned to be a multi-year project. Actually, I have a list, but I won't go through them. So it's like seventy-nine thousand, but one of the main points I want to make about that, that the seventy-nine thousand is, no project has ever been turned down because this money was unavailable, or we didn't have the money to fund a project. Again, I'm not making excuses that these should have been closed, closed out sooner, but I'm just saying it's a priority. But no public application did not benefit from the monies that we had, or that, you know, that the monies were sitting and they were gaining some form of interest. I imagine it's not a lot. Again, I'm not making excuses, but these are just things to think about. So I know we had, I had spoken briefly to, to Kathy about, you know, coming before CPC and talking about the three percent again, and, you know, taking the time to do it. I think that was one of the concerns that there was last time. So I think we have a great committee. I am very proud to work with every one of these people. I think even the, the members that the select board have put on bring great value to what we're doing, but know we're committed, and we're committed to continuing to benefit the taxpayers of the town. And it does take time, you know, and the admin money is needed. There, there are many things. There's a new job description that's going to be coming out. We went through, and we altered, and we changed things that we saw that maybe things we could do better, more things that, more education for us as well. So again, I thank you for the support that you've shown here tonight, but for the public watching, just know that, you know, there've been a lot of great projects that have been done. There's been no mismanagement of, of your monies. Could things maybe in the past have been done better, but I, I tell you, this, this, this board is committed to doing things right, abiding by the way things are supposed to be done, closing out these projects. I've talked to Carla about it. She's well aware it's coming. Go onto any of our meetings. They've been on every agenda since May. And like I said, we have committees coming forward, so some of the larger monies of that seventy-nine thousand will be closed out within the next couple of months. So thank you. I appreciate it.
All right, thanks. Is there any online comment? Okay, Marnie?
Hi there. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I will take less than three minutes. So I'm speaking, Marnie Houlihan. I'm speaking as a planning board member, and then I'm going to put another hat on as just a citizen. So as a planning board member, we held a meeting last night and made the decision to send you all a letter. I don't know if you saw it in advance, but basically Lisa Bracio is our planning board appointee to the CPC Commission, and the planning board did vote last night that we wanted to send a letter that strongly supports the work of the Community Preservation Committee and the value that the Community Preservation Act has provided to Southborough. Since Southborough first joined the CPA in two thousand and three, it has benefited from nearly two and a half million in state funding that it would not otherwise have received, which has gone to valuable town projects Lisa just highlighted a few. So as a planning board member, I just wanted to make sure that the public understood where the planning board sat and that we do have an elected official on the CPC that is, represents the planning board there with Lisa Bracio. So my second comment is Marnie Houlihan, twenty-six Clifford Road resident. So I am just going to say that Kathy and I are not often on the same page, and I would like to say that I'm in violent agreement with Kathy this evening, and I support wholeheartedly her points that were made tonight. And I think we, with this macroeconomic and our political chaos right now, for the state to be able to provide us returns of sixteen percent, you can't find matches like that right now, or you can't find returns right now. It's basically free money, regardless of the declining state match. So I would also support an increase to three percent, but right now, the town has said one percent. Marguerite, thank you for your comments. I would also agree that we do allow the town voters to make decisions on what they would like to fund, and we have done that. I have attended town meeting for over twenty years, and I'm proud to be able to sit there and support those really valuable projects that come to town. So speaking from both hats, I thank you for providing me the mic this evening.
Thank you. Okay, does anyone else wish to comment on this? I don't see it as necessary for us to take any votes or anything like that. Okay. All right, with that, we have in our packet, a, this is the first draft of the October twenty-seven, twenty twenty-five special town meeting warrant. We're going to have a couple, at least, what is the deadline for us to get this done? How many meetings do we have?
So the plan, well, your drop dead is the board will approve the final warrant at your October seventh meeting.
Okay.
So you have two scheduled meetings, September second and sixteenth, for which to finalize things.
Okay, so maybe the next one should be, we should have a really more serious focus on this. Anyone want to begin with their views on the, the list here? Or I can begin, but-
Go ahead.
Okay. Articles one and two are basically placeholders for the Atlantic matter, right?
And if you listened to the meeting on Monday night, I believe there was a comment, a recommendation to combine those into one. So this may end up being one. I don't know where the planning board, where they stand, but at least it was suggested. So that might be one and not two before it's over with.
For the golf revolving funds, I, I don't remember what that's all about. Does anyone?
I do.
Okay, what is it about?
So this is one where, right now, we've got a bylaw that restricts what it can be used for. And I believe that it's time, given its success, to broaden what the funds can be used for so that we really can pull some money out to get a return on the five million dollar investment we have in the entire facility. So it's all in looking at the language and doing the appropriate thing to allow us to use excess funds for things other than the golf course.
Okay, and would you put together the draft language for the article?
I will.
Okay. And then the cemetery commission is one we've talked about before, and I think I can now get behind for the reasons that-
Cannot?
Can, for the reasons that Bill, Bill Kundif has articulated. And I don't know whether the language that's in here right now is just good enough, is this is where, I guess, we need a home rule petition to do this?
You do that. That's simply placeholder language.
Okay, so then maybe Jay would work with us?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Jay-
Hey, Andrew.
Uh, Bill Kundif, yeah?
Before we go much further, Ken, we at least state the following, just before we get to the rest of them. This is a really important special town meeting, as we know. The first two articles are very important because of what they might result in as far as additional significant commercial development in town, which is what we've been striving for, for a couple of years now, to try to expand that tax base. So therefore, I think it's important that as we look at the rest of these, we, we, you know, it's the select board's role to put the articles on this warrant, correct? Everybody agree with that? We put them there, okay? To make sure that we keep one and two in mind here and try to end up with a warrant that is fairly easy to digest, doesn't cause controversy other places where it's not needed. And if it's not needed for this, you know, put it on the, the annual town meeting, if it's really not something that's time-sensitive, unless it's just something that is fairly perfunctory and fairly easy to, to digest. So that's, that's kind of my philosophical statement as far as what to keep on here, what not to keep on here.
I think the ideal number for the special town meeting is, which if you want to have just one night-
Oh, yes.
Is, you know, ten is about, and then you think maybe three or four of those get on the consent agenda.
Yeah. So the next one's one of those. That's why I brought it up before we got to the next one. So I don't know if there's any compelling reason to put Atwood on this versus annual town meeting. Al, may you know more about this? I don't know who's looking at this. You know, it's been this way for a long, long time. Do we need to do this now? Or do, do we wait until April when we've got a better idea of what the budget looks like for the next year?
Uh, Al?
Um, yeah, there is actually a reason, and I can't talk about it in open session.
So I have a reason I can talk about in open session. I've had conversations with Bill Kundif as well as with Tim Tease about this. So DEP is aware of this issue based on all the testing and everything that was done, and they are expecting us to continue to move forward with this. What Tim had talked about with us is if at the fall meeting, we do the money for the engineering and design of the solution and then go for the construction money in the spring, that would make DEP happy.
Do we know, we don't know yet what that number is.
Eighty-five thousand.
So we do know?
We do.
And that's a number I remember hearing.
It's in the draft, so I, I'd gone back to, I'd gone back to the engineers and asked them, you know, what is the safe number that we need in order to get everything ready right up until, and through, through bid process?
Okay, well, that's a lot less than asking for the whole-
Correct, so we could do it in small-
I feel much better about just asking for that piece than trying to get the whole thing funded. Okay, so I misunderstood. I thought we were trying to get the whole thing funded.
No, no, that was not, that was not-
I had the same journey, so my fault. So I am less concerned hearing that than I was.
So six is a, I assume, just a placeholder, because this was a recommendation from the Housing Production Plan?
Yeah.
You know, I've had, I had a brief conversation about this with Lisa, and I know that some people feel that if we were to increase that cap, that you should add a, some affordability component to that, but I don't know where that, this would need to go through a public hearing at the planning board, and I don't, I really don't know where that stands, so. Do you know?
I don't know where it stands.
Okay.
It sounds to me like a high discussion, time-consuming article, but I favor putting it off for a meeting.
Putting it off for annual town meeting?
I mean, there's no harm in doing that, but-
Yeah.
Okay, seven is we just agreed tonight to put it on, longevity adjustments.
Yep, we did.
And eight is the related, eight, seven and eight are companion articles.
It is. If I could find a way to combine seven and eight, I will, I will do that.
Ten is one we just discussed tonight, too.
Are you skipping the roof?
Uh, I'm just skipping around a little bit in order, but for the near-y roof, Schools has asked to put a placeholder on.
That's correct.
Okay.
That's likely to be controversial.
I know that.
Yeah.
So, um, maybe let's talk about it on September second, get some more information. And eleven, Al, do you have an update on, on that?
Hang on for half a second. Let me just-
Just skip ten. Oh, ten, I think we already said we're going to do that, right?
Yeah.
So we just need to broaden that out.
And a second appropriation for Sam.
So would you do it in the same, or would you do it?
I'd do it in two separate ones.
Two separate, okay.
Yeah, as far as eleven goes, I think we'll be briefing the committee shortly. I, I, I don't want to tip our hand quite yet, but we, we have to meet, we're going to meet next week and probably make some, some fundamental decisions about how we proceed.
Okay. So it sounds like the one maybe we agreed to, should probably be taken off the draft list, is six?
Yeah, but I think we need to talk about twelve, too. That's where I think that things get too complicated.
You mean eleven?
I mean twelve. What's twelve? What I've got written here. Maybe I've got a wrong one. I said I've got twelve for- Yeah.
I only see twelve, eleven.
I, yeah, I think we're working off a different draft now.
Yeah, they sent a new one out today that added a couple, so I've got thirteen of mine.
Yeah, those are just, those are just placeholders from the planning board asked for. So we'll keep them there. And then one that's just worth having a placeholder for is what Al and I have talked about is, and we'll just, there'll be a whole memo about this. We'll talk about it, but just as a placeholder, a, a governance committee, which is, we've looked at other towns that have done this. Shrewsbury, Holliston, Jay Tallerman has given us some ideas of. It's something the select board could do on its own, right, to just form an ad hoc committee, but there may be some value in asking town meeting to form the, blessing to form the committee, and then also having maybe something we can talk about. committee, and then also having maybe something we can talk about, moderator maybe be the appointing authority there, so that it starts to educate people about, like, this is why we're doing it, so that if there's a recommendation that comes a year later, people have an idea about why, why we're thinking about doing this.
So this is a committee formed to find out why we have too many committees?
Okay, well, that's, you raise a very good point there, which is, you raise a very good point about should we just.
Oh, that's funny.
That's, you could take the view that, doesn't make any sense? And we would just, but then there's some downsides to the select board just doing it ourselves. I mean, Hall, I mean, Jay Tallerman talked to us about Hall, Holliston, which, there actually, they had a town manager bylaw that went through a whole process of, they had to form the committee like this, and then you do outreach, you hold public forums, you know? It's a way where that there's an increase of the chance of it actually getting passed. So, but look, we'll just, I think it's worth putting, leaving a placeholder for it, and if the board as a whole thinks it's not worth putting on there, we won't put it on there.
If this were any other town meeting, given the importance of one and two.
But people can leave after, we hope they don't, but, and we know people are going to, but.
Unless somebody moves to reconsider.
Yeah.
Is, would six just be an administrative thing, just simply take it out of the language, or is this, is there more to this that I'm not quite understanding?
I think we're looking, working on different views, different lists.
Six is a seven percent cap.
Oh, no, that's a zoning change, so there is in the current zoning code.
It says seven percent, up to seven percent, right? We're a couple of units behind it, but is that just simply take out the up to, or is there like more to this?
I thought they were going to think about ten or something.
I think what the housing production plan was recommending is exactly that, just take out the seven percent.
There are two issues, one is, should we either raise it to ten percent or just simply eliminate the cap entirely? And then, and I think folks are leaning towards eliminating the cap, and then the second one is whether there should be an affordability requirement for this class of development.
So Ellen, do you wish to speak to that?
Sure, thank you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, thank you, Ellen Mario, One Weatherby Lane, a member of the Affordable Housing Trust. So the trust and the planning board have been working on this in an effort to bring it to fall town meeting. So as Al said, it is both an issue of removing the cap and putting in the affordability component. There is also some other sort of confusing language in there about density, so it does involve some kind of general cleanup of that part of the zoning code, so it is kind of a little more complicated than just striking that part from the bylaw.
Do you think we should keep it as just a placeholder for, it's, it has like a realistic potential of being a fall town meeting article, or we should just not even try and just have it in the?
I think it's realistic, if, I mean, I think, you know, we've been working on this with planning, it will be on the planning board agenda on September eighth, so, but it has been, yeah, it has been worked on pretty significantly since we met about the housing production plan, so I think keeping the placeholder on, at least for now, would be appreciated.
Okay, I think we should keep it on then. Nope, nope, yes. Okay.
Excellent, thanks, Marnie Houlihan, planning board, thanks Ellen for being on tonight. Yeah, so this particular one, we will be filing for a public hearing, so it probably, all of these warrant articles, the Atlantic Management, the ADU, and the housing cap all need a public hearing process. Those will start September eighth at the planning board, and we have every intention to make sure all three are part of the process, so they can be included in the special town meeting.
So we'll, you know, keep those on, I know sometimes what's happened, like, you know, I think it's hard with the special town meeting, it's, it's ideal to keep it to one night because it's hard to even get the call on the second night, but there's no harm in just keeping this on the placeholder, and then also, it's frequently happened that if the meeting goes until ten-thirty at night, people say, okay, we're just going to move to indefinitely postpone these, or not consider these two articles and just push them back, and that's what we do. Do you think there's anything else we need to discuss about the draft warrant? And then we'll just have, this is going to be a focus of the meeting on September second? So I think, are we ready to go into executive session?
Thank you.
I move that the board enter into executive session per mass general law, chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one, and not return to open session for the following, A, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining exemption three, B, to conduct strategy sessions in preparations for negotiations with non-union personnel exemption two, and C, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation exemption three, as the chair has determined, an open meeting will have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body. So we have to do this in a roll call vote, Dennington, aye?
Landry, aye. Cook, aye.
Lynn, aye.
Hamilton, aye.
Okay, so we're going to go into executive session.